Good evening to all those who've joined us. Welcome to the October 20th, 2021, meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Pleased that this meeting is conducted as authorized by New York State Emergency Legislature, which amends the open meetings law to allow for public meetings to be held virtually. First, let me confirm that each board member is either alone, like me, or no one's around you trying to unduly influence a vote. Ms. Weiser?
I'm alone.
Ms. Lawson?
I am alone.
Mr. Pickett?
I am alone.
Mr. Oliver?
I'm alone.
Ms. DeNapoli?
I'm alone.
And Vice Chair Dexter?
I'm alone.
Thank you all. Please, to me, as we salute the Stars and Stripes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is continued public hearing. This is for Carriage Trails. It's firmly known, I believe, the applicants or the owners are going back to its original name, Procter Muse. This is a public hearing for extension of site plan deadlines to complete construction. Location is 1269 Route 9G, but more familiarly for most people in Hyde Park. This is a big parcel that is located behind the Moose Lodge. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So move, Dan Weiser?
Documented, Brent Pickett.
Thank you. On favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Welcome back to the Procter Muse team. There's a big bunch of group of people here. In the meantime, they've submitted some changes, some revisions to the original plan. These are ones that have been discussed off and on. So let me turn it over to you, Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Brandt, et cetera. Lou, you're muted still.
How's that? That better?
Yes.
Okay. So we're here tonight. We wanted to show you the progress we've made and the efforts toward getting this freshened up. So we've submitted a significant amount of materials, an updated set of drawings, which is still not complete. And, you know, there are ministerial mistakes, but, you know, and some substantive changes that we are seeking. But I wanted to, we wanted to have you take a look at that and see that. We also have had Mr. Morgan amend or his memo on vested rights to allow the planning board and Ms. Paladoro the opportunity to review it and consider our assertion that we are entitled to vested rights on the planning, on the site plan. That really is one of the primary things we hope to come out of the meeting with is some direction from the board, whether they decide that they're going to continue with vested rights, or they will not consider vested rights, or they, or whether we need to go to the zoning officer and get a determination from TAD, or whether the planning board wants to direct us to the zoning board. But we would like to resolve that matter because that's critical to first having, you know, a, giving us all.
Kaufman, let me pop in here real quickly. This is, we've had memos from Ms. Paladoro and also from Mr. Morgan, a revision from Mr. Morgan. The only way this will ultimately be to set, would be settled would be by a judge, some sort of adjudication. And I don't think that either one of our sides wants to do that. So for me personally, I'm happy to proceed as though you are vested as to the remaining density that you have. I also will take note here that you've actually lopped off a lot of the original, you know, density that was last approved. I'll put it that way. That's owing to the DEC. Given that, that you were willing to remove that because of direction from the DEC, I don't think we really need to go that much further into the idea of being vested or not. It seems except, I'll ask all the board members sort of opine on that. But we're not adversarial here, as you know, we like to work with you. So to the extent that there's a question about it, Victoria can weigh in later on, so can Mr. Morgan. But I'd like to just consider that settled right now, as I said. Doesn't that make you happy, Lou? You're supposed to be smiling.
Oh, I, I know. I was waiting for the board to opine.
No, no, when I call on them, when I call them individually, we'll have them opine then.
Well, if that's a decision, that's obviously very, that's great because we can move forward. I know Mr. Arico will be relieved that he doesn't have to change all his zoning charts again. But that, that's very helpful to us. I've always felt that, you know, we've reduced the density significantly and to still have to do it some more because of some new restriction didn't seem very practical or equitable. So if that's the board's decision, that would be great. We move on. And I appreciate.
Well, I'll ask, I'll ask the board. There's no decision made yet. I'll ask the board, but that's only where I'm standing. That's all.
I would just like to add one comment about that. And very positive aspect of that is it really enables the beginning of the processing of all the other applications. Once we have a working site plan that we can start developing plans around. So I just think that's a very positive circumstance for the board to get as full a picture and review as to what's the right project for this location and moving forward. So thank you for that.
Of course. Do you want to continue, Mr. Kaufman? Or anybody else?
You know, we weren't prepared to give that up. So this really will expedite the real substantive issues that face this project and get us to start from the ground, which is, if we can do that, nothing would please us more. And I think the town would be appreciative to, you know, finally get this project off the ground. So that would be great because we have other issues that we want to move on to, but this was number one. Thank you.
And do you want to show for the benefit of the public what you submitted? Is there a way to share screen? Any of you? If not, that's, if not, that's okay. The board's familiar with this, but we are in a public hearing.
Dominic, can you put that up or you have the ability to do that?
Yes, I have the PDF up on my screen now. If I needed to share a screen, I can do that.
Why don't you do that? So that the board can see where we're going.
You need to give me permission or can I just do it? I'm not sure.
Whose permission do you need? You have ours.
You're good. Go for it. You might need the host.
All right. So share screen. Share. Can you see that?
Yes.
All right. So what is it? What would you like me to show? What we're just.
A new layout?
Yeah, do the overall cycling. Is that page, does that see one? 1.1?
This is, this is our, this is our cover page. As you can see, as, you know, the public is listening to this as well, right? That's what you said. Okay. So this is our cover page. I can zoom in here. This is basically the property we're talking about is this outer white line here. This is the development area that we're, have revised to. This is the area down here that was on the plans at the previous approvals, which we have removed from the project. This area back here was the extension of the water line that was installed during the initial construction from the original approvals. This area here is undeveloped and is not included in our application for permitting or construction at this time. It's only this area up in here. And then this area down here doesn't show it. Well, that's where our treatment, treatment plan is going to be. I can go to a black and white version, maybe a little easier. It shows the topography and it's pretty, just not over the overlay mapped. Again, these are, this is area here is our phase one. This is our phase two. Each unit is, is the same, same size unit. They're, I don't want to say duplexes, but there's a, there's, there's one set of apartments here, one set of apartments here, and then there's like a breezeway in between, between the two. It does look like two buildings, but it is only one.
Just for everyone's edification, this was done the last time that we amended the site plan. The realtors had told the then owners that if you had a long row, that the corner units were the first to sell or the first to be rented. People did not want to be on the inside sharing walls. So they revised the footprint so that these are actually all, everyone would be a corner unit. That's why it was designed this way.
Yes. I mean, and we're, and we are still enacting the same, pretty much same footprint that was approved before. As far as what we're proposing, I mean, there is, there is no real change to the drawings, change to the design. There's the road layout, the system, the parking, the locations of the buildings, the location of the treatment, the treatment area down here.
Dominic, would you just circle the area that we have eliminated, the last phase, actually, that we've eliminated the units in? That's where there were 68 units. You know, as you can see from just the topography, that's not entirely wetlands. There's uplands areas there, but it was a lot easier to like not, it just was a better project and simpler not to start weaving roads in and out and throwing a few units during there. We can still make this project work at the 249, keep it nice and, you know, and have a lot more open space and a lot more space for the turtles and the bats and, and all the happy critters. And, but, you know, just it will be, it's a better development as, as I think you all said, you know, in prior showings of this. So the principal change between what we had and what we are offering is open space in that lower right corner. So, so that's, that's, that's the critical change.
So, and this is the, this is the lodge down here, if anybody's familiar with that. Things like certain changes that are significant, any change in a development is, but say water, the water line system is exactly the same. Sewer, again, is exactly the same. The only difference is we're using a different style of treatment plant. That's a little bit more dated towards today. It's more of a smaller package plant than a, the type that was before was more, different type of treatment process, but this is a more advanced treatment, if you want to look at it that way. It's still, it's allowed to be built in stages as the, as the last one wasn't. And stormwater, stormwater, since this isn't being developed, there's a significant reduction in our stormwater runoff compared to what was prepared before, while still maintaining the existing ponds, which is there's one here, there's one here, one here, and they have other little treatment areas. Those will still stay intact. There's no reason to redesign them. And in fact, they'll be suitable, overdesigned in a way, but they'll still have the proper treatment based on the original design and speed improvement that is presently active. The, I think the other change is the, the bridge overpass that's crossing here. We've done, or we completed a report that indicates that the culverts and the crossings are more than adequate to carry the, the road and Elbow Creek as well. And we realign the, the pavement down in this area to center it more over the existing culverts. And still three lane road entry sidewalks, things like that are all intact. Again, just to emphasize one last time, there really isn't a lot of major change, except for the fact that we removed the, that last phase. And I've gone through and reevaluated all the design that was done back in the original approval and, and ready to re-verify those, the sewer, the water, the stormwater is still adequate to meet the reduction that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Arico.
Yeah. We received a couple of comments from Bonnie Frantzen and Pete Tatero. I don't think, you know, I'm not going to go through them, obviously, the comments now. Bonnie, we're going to address your comments, you know, in a response letter. I think some of them.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I appreciate that they were helpful. And I think we'll clarify that some of these are not even issues and we're fixing what isn't. And then the rest, well, you know, you'll make your suggestions and the board will too. Yeah. But yes, the same thing with Pete. We're going to deal with his comments as well. That's more for Dominic to deal with. But we'll address that in the appropriate fashion with a response letter to each one of the comments that he's made. What I, I think, unless you have, I'd like to get to the next issue that has been, I'm sure, on everybody's mind. We have new faces in our team tonight, and they are, well, Shelley and Ethan are with the SLR. And they have been investigating the rehabilitation of the existing bridge. And their initial report was very positive, but they said they needed to do further engineering and studies. And Shelley, if you're prepared to, you know, explain to the board where you're at and what you've done, just to let them know that we haven't been sitting on our morals, that would be very helpful.
Sure. So I'm, again, I'm Shelley Plude with SLR. I'm a senior structural engineer. We went out to the site a couple of times now. We did a visual inspection of the existing covert. And basically, our objective was to, to evaluate what shape that structure is in now. And what we found is the pipes are generally in reasonably good shape. There's a little bit of deformation. They were once round. They've, they've squashed a little bit, but we're talking about an inch or two here or there. You know, as, as we would expect, there's some, some rust along the water line. There's a couple of spots on the downstream ends of the pipes where there's some perforations, but overall, the pipes are largely intact and still in reasonably good condition. The head walls are probably the primary deficiency of the structure. They appear to be concrete founded on stone foundations. And the stone foundations, particularly on the downstream side, have some pretty large voids under and around the pipes. The concrete portion of the head wall looks like it's held back by some sort of tieback system. So, so based on what we found as a part of that inspection, we looked at the possibility of rehabilitating the structure because of the condition that it's in. We found from a structural standpoint that it is feasible to rehabilitate this. What that would look like, we would do a slip lining of the pipes. We would insert essentially a new pipe inside each of the pipe culverts. The space between the new pipe and the existing pipe would be grounded and we would replace the, the head walls. We're, so we're looking at the constructability of, you know, do we need to go slightly outboard to do the new head walls? Can we, you know, bring the pipe in a little bit, cut the pipe length a little bit? We have to look at that as we, as we go forward with developing a full rehabilitation plan. Ethan Eli, who is on our team, is looking at this from a hydraulic perspective. So like I said, we established from a structural standpoint, the bridge is in good enough condition. It is salvageable. We can rehabilitate it structurally. And Ethan's task is to look at this from a hydraulic standpoint because obviously, once we put those, those new pipeliners in there, we want to make sure that we're not adversely impacting the water course and the, the ability of the structure to convey flows during flood events. So Ethan, if you want to give an overview of where we are so far with that?
Yeah. So my name's Ethan Eli. I'm a water resources engineer with SLR. And so we've been putting together a HECCRAZ model, a hydraulic computer model, to look at the capacity of the existing structure, hydraulic capacity of the existing structure, and kind of look at the, the alternatives for slip lining and how those affect that hydraulic capacity. We went out there back in September and got some surveyed cross-sections upstream and downstream of the structure and got some survey elevations for the pipes themselves. We've also done some in-depth measurements of the pipes. And running through the, the existing conditions model, you know, the current pipes are corrugated, corrugated metal pipes, and there's four seven footers. They convey a pretty significant amount of flow. Due to the layout of the current road, during some larger flood events, up to, you know, the 100-year event, 50-year event, the road would be, you know, overtop under existing But the, the culverts, the road directly above the culverts is not. We looked at taking and, you know, installing a variety of slip liners inside the culverts to maintain their current capacity. So we looked at a couple of different types of plastic pipe. There's an HDP, high-density polyethylene, and a, a glass reinforced plastic pipe, which can kind of be made to, made to order these systems. And both of them are slightly smaller in diameter than the existing pipes, so you can slip them inside, but they're much smoother. And you can also kind of modify the inlet to, to reduce head loss, reduce energy loss so that you can convey more flow. We found that one of the, the pipe varieties that we're looking at, the GRP, the glass reinforced plastic pipe, had some potential with a modified inlet called a tapered inlet. You can pass pretty much the same amount of flow and you don't have any significant impact on the water surface upstream. So, you know, it's a viable option for rehabilitating the culverts and not having any impact on, on the well end or the, or the current flooding capacity of the structure. And this is our initial results. We're still kind of looking into it a little more. I've been working on, on putting together a hydraulic analysis memorandum, kind of summarizing our current results, and we're delving deeper into the modeling, so.
Ethan, if I may ask, wouldn't that tapered front also lessen the chances of things getting blocked and not flowing through the pipe?
Potentially. I would say not significantly, just because you still have multiple structures. You don't have a single span. And the only time you're really going to reduce the amount of debris collecting at the inlet would be as if you, if you put in a fewer spans, pretty much, you know, a larger opening.
So it was, it's not only on paper. They've gotten their boots in the stream and in fact, they've had the pipe manufacturer out there to determine what kind of product would work. So, and he, not he or she, actually, I shouldn't presume that, had indicated that they can provide a product that would be, you know, successfully drawing the culverts and helping this effort. So we're very far along in, in, in preparing a report for your review, Pete's review, DEC. We, you know, I was promoting, I was pushing them to see if we could get something in front of you, but having in front of you tonight without any chance to review is, is good, was really not going to help. So, you know, we're going to let Ethan go to bed early tonight and get started tomorrow on finishing that report. But yeah, so, but as you can tell, that, that bridge concept is far along. So let me just address one of the things that was pretty clearly made to us was by Pete, which is the town is not interested in taking over the road without a new bridge. So we're getting that message. And if that's the case, then we would suggest that there is a legal method by which we can maintain, that we would retain ownership of the road or give full easements and access for all the purposes that that road would be performing had it been a public road, except you don't have to maintain it anymore. We still have the issue of school buses, but we'll sort that out too. But the, the purpose is, is that that road will function and no one's going to know the difference except your road crews who won't have to plow it in the winter. So we think that actually the town would benefit by that. So we're going to hopefully proceed because, again, we're really having a hard time figuring out how to make the, the project work with the new bridge. It just is overwhelming. But, and, and based on what we're hearing from SLR, which are bridge builders, are bridge designers, we think that we can make it work. So we hope to have a, a report for you guys to really chew on soon, but we thought that in lieu of that, we, we brought the, the bodies with us and they can tell you what they thought.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Rudikoff, Ms. Plude, Mr., I think you said Eli rather than Eli, and Mr. Arico. So let me bore everyone for just a moment with some housekeeping. As a reminder, this hearing is on an extension of time to make complete construction. The reason why we've been doing this and meeting periodically is because all permits that the applicants had expired over time, every permit. So we really can't just extend something that's a paper that's fictitious because it couldn't be approved as is. So that's why the applicants have been meeting with us off and on to make project changes. That noted, now that you've actually made a submission to amend or revise the site plan, it's going to take some time for us to get this into shape for us to circulate under SEACER. So we were going to suggest that we adjourn the public hearing portion of this, January 19th, and we can take this up as workshop items later on to discuss as we move forward. So that's just sort of the first point. The second would be that in terms of the bridge, yes, Mr. Satero, our highway superintendent, Howard Fisher, there's been a general consensus that we do not want to take over a bridge that has this many culverts. I've been down to visit the bridge, as has Ms. Frantzen and Ms. Moss. We were down there one day. The perforation that Ms. Plude referred to, there is some damage on the bottom side, on the outflow side. But we'd heard already the discussion of the idea of slip lining the existing culverts and doing something to try to make sure that, as Mr. Eli put it, that the capacity remain the same, not actually be improved. And thank you, Mr. Eli, for pointing out that the best way to improve this would actually be to have an open span or to less of the pipes that are in there now. At any rate, that's, again, just sort of a follow-up of where we've been. So before I go on, reminder to all the planning board members, when I call on you, please comment about the density issue. Let me start with Mr. Satero, comments? Pete?
Well, I think, you know, we've already talked about the bridge. So if it's going to remain a private road, what they're proposing to do seems to make sense. I've seen it done before many times. It'd be a little like challenging in order to physically do it because you're going to have to, you're going to have to coffer dam, coffer dam the stream so that you can keep at least one of the culverts like dry. But that's, again, that's, you know, a construction method and something that the DEC would be looking at when they review for the permit. And, you know, the rest of our comments, the plans are still in the preliminary phase in terms of engineering. We'll need an amended stormwater pollution prevention plan. And the only other thing, I forgot where we left off, was there going to be an updated traffic analysis done? Because the current plans, the current plans that I have appear to still show the DOT improvements on 9G. I just don't know where we left off with that. I don't remember.
Yeah. Pete, sorry, we actually, we missed out on that. We, we actually have something. We'll, we'll have you, we'll submit something shortly on, on an updated traffic report.
Yeah. I mean, it's not, it's not really, it's not really so much for me. I mean, you know, we're not really going to look too hard at it. It's really a DOT issue. They're, they're the ones that have approval over the highway, so it's more important to get that into their hands, so.
Duly noted. Yeah. George has been working on that with Dominic and a traffic expert, and we'll get that done.
Thank you. Pete, Ms. Frantzen, comments?
Yes. So everybody should have received a memo. And really, it's to some extent a repeat of a prior memo. The applicant was perfecting what they were proposing and some of my comments still stand. You know, ultimately, my general comments, first thing is vested rights, because I think until that's settled, it's hard to move forward and for the applicant to know definitively, you know, how many units are they dealing with in the development? um, you know, how many units are they dealing with in the development? Uh, also with vested rights, I just want to make sure when there's ultimately some determination made that it's clear of the breadth of the vesting, um, and the vested rights because there are other, um, I think requirements in the N C zone such as scale. Uh, and I had said, you know, that the zoning administrator may want, want to opine on whether scale is calculated on multiple dwellings, but it may, it may be a moot point if in some way, all of this is being, um, vested. Uh, this is still Seeker. It's a Seeker type one. Um, you know, clearly much of the layout remains the same. Uh, except that they have dropped, uh, dwelling units in an area that, uh, essentially was wetland and near wetlands. So it's from that perspective going to be, uh, less impactful. There was reference in the submission to, um, documents that were being attached to the F E A F, which we did not receive. I don't know if they were the same as what had been previously submitted, such as the planning structural study. Uh, and I think we had discussed previously that a traffic report and updated one, uh, would be prepared. So, you know, a lot of our, uh, you know, comments have to do with the site plan layout, you know, they're the same as our prior memo. I would just point out that I did highlight in a couple of areas, the two thousand seven versus twenty twenty-one plan. In two areas, the buildings were kind of changed in relation to a parking layout. And to take a look at that and, you know, is that better, you know, ultimately for the overall layout? Um, I think that's something that the planning board will want to weigh in on. Uh, I had some cleanup items, uh, with regard to, um, the E I F. And then when we're referencing the parcels that are actually involved in the application, just to make sure we're including all the ones that are part of this application, because in fact, there are three, uh, subdivided parcels. And one is, you know, primarily where the dwelling units will be located. Uh, another is where I think the access to the wastewater treatment plant will be located because it doesn't follow, um, this kind of flag lot shape. The drive doesn't follow along the flag lot. It kind of goes off into another property. And then of course, there's the road parcel itself. So, you know, in something that application, you know, let's just make sure we're including all those parcels that are involved in the application. And again, a lot of these are just simply, um, questions about the layout, um, cleanup. And we do acknowledge that, that there are, um, you know, these are preliminary. You did do profiles. You have the general layout, some grading, but there are details that have to be added, et cetera. And then, uh, to remember, you did submit some color renderings. Uh, I think we were still looking to get floor plans at some point. Uh, we would need to look at the, the, the architecture for the maintenance building. And then you actually have two buildings. Uh, one is smaller than the other. So I wasn't sure if those, uh, renderings were also reflecting those two types of buildings, um, instead of one. So again, you know, we expect a lot more information to flow as this progresses. But ultimately, I think the first step is really coming to grips with how the vested, uh, rights, uh, is addressed. And I defer to, to the attorneys on that and, and the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Um, Ms. Polidoro, any comments? I feel like there must be. I hope there will be.
Well, no, I mean, I, if we want to have a discussion about vested rights, I mean, that's a discussion I'd like to have in an attorney-client session. Um, not right now on Zoom. Uh, we can have that discussion, but, um, you know, I agree that we do need to come to a decision on that sooner rather than later because the project just can't proceed without knowing those numbers.
Thank you. Anything else?
Um, no, I mean, Ted, I guess I always thought that scale didn't apply to residential uses. So we should have a discussion about, you know, whether you consider this a residential use.
Getting me to Ms. Moss, any comments? Ted?
Not at this time.
So briefly, before I go to the board for anyone watching, the issue with vested rights is that, um, Mr. Morgan, their attorney, has done some research and cited case law. Ms. Polidoro looked into it and also cited New York State case law. As I like to say, if you look long enough, you're going to find judges on opposite sides of the opinions fairly often. Um, unless it's really conclusive. It appeared to sort of our side will say that even though the applicants have put um, money, invested money into existing infrastructure, i.e. water lines, et cetera, that in many cases, Victoria found that you have to actually build, put in foundations, something actually for the structures before vesting occurs. And the issue arose because, um, this was approved under an older zoning code. Um, New York state law tends to emphasize that you are, you can proceed with that approval only after so many years. Since this has, project has been stalled so long and has not proceeded, then the question became, does it fall under the new zoning? Under the new zoning, the applicants would lose even more density. And I personally am sensitive to the fact that you basically are looking at expensive wastewater treatment plant, even the smaller one. And so you have to kind of examine what the density is necessary to carry all those costs, including the extension of the water line, et cetera. Because all applicants are allowed or permitted, I should say, to make a reasonable return on investment with their properties. That doesn't mean they always will because there's risk and development, but that's what the sort of case law generates as well. Victoria, do you want to add anything?
Well, now that, now that you've said all that, I mean, I guess I'll just say it's a, it's a fact-specific discussion about the improvements that have been made. Um, if, if they had foundations in the ground, I don't even think we'd been, we'd be having a discussion. It would be very clear. But they're in an in-between space between, you know, having the, the plans approved and starting work, but not yet having those foundations. And so the question is, is all the infrastructure that they put in, is that enough to have vested rights? And again, it's really a fact-based inquiry. Um, that, um, you know, we can talk about more specifically in private, but it, that's what it comes down to. And, and whether those utilities can be used for a different type of project that meets zoning. And, you know, what, we would have to discuss whether or not it's feasible to have, you know, these kinds of wastewater treatment plants and water plants at a lesser density and what density do you need to support them, et cetera. So we're happy to have that discussion, um, with you. We can schedule a time to have it or you can weigh in tonight, based on what you've heard.
Thank you. Um, then let me start to my sort of, back when we sat together, my physical left, Ms. Wisser, comments?
Hi, um, so I do, you know, I would be inclined to find it acceptable to accept the vested rights regarding density, but if there is more facts that, I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to say yes, not a problem. But if there are more facts that need to be uncovered, I think I just should maybe wait to weigh in. Um, I look forward to hearing responses to both Pete's and Bonnie's, um, memorandums. And oops, I just lost my, my, my Bonnie memorandum. So at one, in one of her, she talked about the parking in the two thousand seven versus two thousand twenty-one plan. It, while it does seem that one of the buildings, um, in the, in the two thousand seven was, uh, farther from the intersection and therefore buffered from sound, it seems like both of the, it's in the, it's in your memo that both of the buildings have been moved farther away from the road itself, that there, there could be enough buffer from sound. So it seems like the two thousand twenty-one plan is, won't harm the future residents as, as much as it might appear. And that's just kind of it for right now. Yep.
Thank you, Ann. That's, those are great comments. Mr. Pickett?
Brent, you're muted.
Sorry. Okay, I'm yes on the vested rights because I think it, uh, and with that allowing the higher density, I think it simplifies, you know, the differences between the two thousand three and the two thousand twenty-one site plans and keeps things, you know, out of the courts, just keeps things a lot simpler. Um, the questions I had were the, uh, is there any update on the status of the D E C review?
Um, Lou, you're muted. You're muted still, Lou.
Please, the wastewater plant you're talking about?
No, just overall, there were.
Uh, 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 let me just address that quickly. We actually do have a, an active permit, uh, for general construction, uh, that, uh, was confirmed by, uh, Dominic Arico and, uh, you know, we've been paying all along. So it's not entirely that we have no permits. However, uh, before we, uh, address the D E C.
Wait, I'm sorry, what, can you tell me what permit that is, Mr. Arico?
The, uh, the Speedy's permit for stormwater discharges under construction. The one for the Speedy's permit for the wastewater treatment plant has basically just been, um, I guess it's being modified, changing the system, but the, the discharges are all the same. So although they'll just reissue the permit based on a new system. I, I don't know if there's other D E C permits. Those are the two that I'm working with that are pretty much still. The, the SWIP one is definitely intact. There, there's a permit actively, they just, you're M S four, so it's up to your M S four to, um, just to do what the M S four does as far as review and things like that.
Thank you.
Okay, and one last question, uh, after the culverts have been rehabilitated, what would be an estimated lifetime for them?
Sure, of course. Uh, shall we?
Sure. Um, it's going to come down to the, the type of material that we end up using. Um, you know, H D P E, um, and plastic pipe generally has a very long life expectancy. So it would probably more come down to the concrete head walls, um, and, and the gradual deterioration of that. But I would expect that a rehabilitation would, would add quite a significant amount, um, to the service life of that structure because essentially we're bypassing those existing steel pipes completely. Um, the new, uh, plastic pipe liners will be the structural component of the new structure or of the, uh, rehabilitated culvert. So, um, the exact number is going to come down to what pipe material that we land on. But, um, it's going to have a, a considerable service life when we're done.
Okay, are you talking ten, twenty, thirty years?
I would say probably in excess of that, just based on the plastic. Um, plastic generally has a pretty long service life. Um, so I would say at least twenty, twenty-five years, yeah.
And the head walls?
About the same. Uh, you know, concrete, again, you know, holds up very well. So I would say, uh, again, I bet a minimum twenty, twenty-five years.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add one small comment to Mr. Pickett's question about D E C. Another aspect to that is the other D E C permits, some of the environmental permits, you don't really go into them until you have a site plan that everyone's confident is really the one that's going to be, go under the review of the planning board. So we've held off, uh, on that, but those, uh, staff members have all been in contact, we've been in contact with the Omni Corps. So all of those relationships are really sort of ready to blossom into that full applications now that we have a site plan that we're going to be finalizing and be ready to work with in terms of Seeker and, and all of those, all of those aspects.
Thank you, Matthew. Um, Ms. Wisser, comments? And by the way, before I go on, Mr. Pickett, Brent, those were great questions, particularly about the service life of the bridge once it's been rehabilitated. And here I'll go ahead and state now for the record, so everybody else knows, this will be Mr. Pickett's last evening. Um, he's served for, I think, five or six years, Brent, beautifully and ably. Um, we, one of our planning board alternates, Rob Waters, will be taking his place at the next meeting. And we'll be thanking Brent Moore for his service before, but this is a good example of why you're a very valued member and why I hate to lose you. So, but I know why you're, you want to travel and go have fun and Brent, you deserve it. So, uh, at any rate, Vice Chair Dexter, comments?
Had you asked me?
Oh, Stephanie, sorry, yes.
I just want to make sure who's next, that's all.
Yep.
Um, so I do, uh, I, I support proceeding with vested rights and the higher density. Um, as long as you're comfortable, you're going to get a clean zoning opinion that you may need. So, yeah, I hate to see going all the way down the road and then you can't get a clean zoning opinion for some crazy reason. But I, I have no problem with it. Um, I do have a question about what, since you're going to, since it's going to be privately maintained, what is the ownership entity going to be? Is it a homeowner's association? Is it you? Who, your legal entity, who is going to own this property and be responsible for the maintenance?
Right, it's a, it's a rental project. It's all, uh,
It's rental.
Lily owned, so it would be essentially the landlord, the owner. So it's, there's no homeowner association because we're going to hold all the evidence.
Okay, very good. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. Vice Chair Dexter?
Um, again, my colleagues have, have made excellent comments. Thank you so much. Um, I agree about the vesting, uh, especially now that that, uh, north east corner is basically off the table. It looks much cleaner to me. Um, as far as the bridge, you know, I, um, I need more information. Uh, thank you, Brent, for the, for your questions. Those were excellent. Um, you know, I look at that every morning and I'm, I'm just like, how, you know, I just, I'm not an engineer, so it's, I just have a lot of questions on that. So I'll let better minds than mine figure that out. Um, but, you know, it does look like, uh, a lot of, a lot of questions are starting to get answered. So, uh, but there's still a lot more work to be done. But thank you for hanging in there.
Thank you, Ann. Mr. Oliver?
Uh, I also have no issue with going forward with the vested rights and the density. And my, my only, uh, question was regarding the ownership, given the private maintenance and your answer to that. I'll let the, uh, the engineers figure out the bridge and, uh, await some more information on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Ms. De Napoli?
I would like to have, um, a discussion with Victoria if she has more info. Um, obviously not now and not tonight. And I'm not saying I'm opposed to voting in favor of the vested rights. But if there's something more, this is an area I know very little about. So personally, I just would feel more comfortable. Um, also, with regards to the bridge, if they were to put, if you were to put in a brand new bridge, what is the life expectancy as opposed to fixing the bridge?
I think with, with what we're doing, it's going to be very similar. Um,
So a new bridge would be about twenty, twenty-five years?
Well, that, that's, that's at a, at a bare minimum. Like I said, I need to talk to, um, the pipe suppliers and just confirm if there's a difference in life expectancy of the different types of plastic pipe that we're going with. But plastic in general, um, really doesn't break down. So, so the, the pipes themselves, I think, are going to have a very long service life. Um, when we're talking about building a new bridge, typically the, the design objective that we're supposed to be aiming for is seventy-five to a hundred years. Um, and certainly I think the, that plastic pipe can easily, um, can easily achieve that as well. Um, and, and really the concrete is going to be probably what, what will dictate the service life. But again, concrete also holds up, you know, very well in the long term. So I, I think ultimately both options will provide comparable service life. Um, whether you replace it or, um, whether you rehabilitate it. And it, it really, it comes down to maintenance at the end of the day. If you're, if you're staying on top of things and maintaining, whether it's a rehab, a pipe culvert or a bridge, you know, bridges require maintenance as well. It, it comes down to making sure that you're, you're staying on top of things that, that might otherwise corrode or damage the structure.
Thank you. And Lou, I want to commend you for hanging in there and persevering. Um, I hope it all works out the way you had originally planned it.
Well, I thank you for that. And, uh, again, I, I'm not on automatic pilot yet, so, uh, we're good. Uh, I, I just wanted to say, uh, Ann, you, you, you hit the, uh, nail on the head. Uh, you've answered some questions. We still have a lot more to answer. And that, but I, but I did want to get in front of you guys tonight just to show you the kind of effort. Because the last time you like, uh, you got to show us something. So here's something. It's not, uh, you know, obviously not an end all, but it's, it's the sword. Uh, by the way, uh, the existing bridge, the, uh, engineers would work toward ensuring that there's continued access, you know, not only for the new sludge, but for, you know, all, you know, all of us. So that's an important, uh, you know, thing that, you know, we can promise all we want if we were to put in the new bridge, which needless to say is economically, uh, uh, I understand, just impossible. But, um, you know, that, that could be a problem. And, you know, uh, Mr. Dupree, you pointed out the wastewater treatment plant. Well, the other upfront cost is this bridge. Uh, and finally, uh, we couldn't get a, a permit to install, uh, a building uh, under the current zoning ordinances. We have to put in the entire road eighty percent paved. So, you know, we would be foreclosed from doing that. So it's sort of like, you know, you don't have a building, you don't have a, a foundation, but you put in a lot of money, but you're not there yet. So it's sort of like, you know, you don't have a building, you don't have a foundation, but you put in a lot of money, but you're not there yet. So it's kind of, you know, so we're hoping that the board, which seems to be meeting at that point, recognizes the equities and that, you know, when you're losing sixty-eight units, the town is not giving up that much by this, you know, zoning density when this already existed. So I'm hoping you'll see your way to it.
Right. So I'm glad everyone got a chance to weigh in tonight on the issue. I'll work to answer any board members' comments and then also with the zoning administrator, who's ultimately going to be making the decision on accepting the application as complete and identifying whether you would need a variance or not. So.
Thank you. And that's why I suggested, as I believe you know, that we adjourn the public hearing portion of this to January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. That gives us some time to work behind this, well, not behind the scenes, it's public, but to work to make sure we have a complete application and then actually get this ready to go in terms of circulating again for Seeker. Because we've had discussions about the D E C, et cetera, but we haven't referred anything to them yet. So they're going to need the opportunity to see the changes you've made, but the minor ones in terms of building and parking that Bonnie mentioned, but also the major ones you made, which is lopping off sixty-eight, you know, units of density that were permitted prior to this. So in other words, there will be activities going on before January nineteenth. And again, procedurally, so this is on for an extension of the existing site plan because you're proposing a new site plan. We got to the point of approving it, and I think that would restart the dates because this would be a revision. Ms. Moss, and we can confer on that. Ms. Polidoro, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we, if we want an attorney-client meeting, we still have to advertise the meeting, then go into executive session or attorney-client privilege, and then come back out, or am I wrong?
You don't have to do that. We can schedule an attorney-client session that is not part of an open public meeting.
I think that sounds like something we should do to discuss this and to get it done as quickly as, but well, after November second, everybody's busy. But we can discuss this on our own and then get back, circle back to the applicants more formally. As I said, to me, the issue is really that you're going to have, if we said, no, you have to go with the new zoning, you lose more density than if we're there's no other way to move forward except for them to sue the town or to go to the zoning board of appeals for density variances. By the way, it delays the project a lot, and I don't see a reason to have to go to court to decide this in this one particular instance if we can somehow neatly move this forward.
And Mr. Chairman, in our discussions about this, I was very happy and pleased to hear the planner's comments because there's a recognition that the decision isn't so simple. Now, there is some gray area, and really, you look at what's the balance? I mean, the project is definitely, it's more protective of the environment. And what is the public good that's really being gained? There's no more environmental impact, and the project will be more potentially financially viable. And really, it's being built as a desired public asset. So so those are sort of planning considerations, and I appreciate hearing some of that kind of thoughtfulness in the thinking.
Thank you. If there's no other, if there's no other comments, you make a motion to adjourn this to January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two?
I'll make that motion. Brent Pickett?
I second that. Anne Wiser?
If you're a favor, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Everyone, that's unanimous. So gentlemen and lady, Ms. Plude, what we'll do is let us have a chance to have our attorney-client session with Ms. Polidoro. And then we'll get back and maybe schedule another offline meeting, but at least continue the discussion forward, maybe just have you come into a workshop. We'll schedule that as soon as we have our attorney-client session, if that's acceptable?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Kaufman, before we leave, I wanted to, or before you leave, I should say, I wanted to get this into the record. So we had a discussion, I think it was one of our actual meetings, we were still meeting at Town Hall and not wearing masks. So a while back, but just to summarize, there was a decision made to dissolve some tax lots a while back through the Division of Real Property Tax Services for Jeffrey Groves Estates. That was actually carried out by the division. So where there were all the parcels for the townhomes, the lots are gone, where the lot was for the road, that's gone. So after lots of discussion between, I'm sure Mr. Kaufman and his partners, and between Mr. Kaufman and the planning board, we finally, we think we have a path forward, and that is that Mr. Kaufman has resubmitted. I believe the board knows this, but we don't have the plans yet. But basically, he's resubmitted exactly, I believe, let me rephrase that, I haven't seen them either fully. But I believe he submitted exactly what was approved prior to the dissolution of the lines because he's going to seek to re-subdivide this. Ms. Moss has already opined that we can use the parent parcel that was originally there because there's been other subdivisions. This is only a portion of the subdivided lot parcels. We can use the parent parcel to recalculate density. This is actually, even though this started under an older code, it was actually too code with the current density because it's a neighborhood district project. So the reason I'm mentioning all this is there are lenders for this project, Jeffrey Groves Estates, that are interested to make sure that this will proceed accurately and, I guess we'll call it amicably. Ms. Moss, though, under our code, is required to judge or deem an application administratively complete. She has all, we all know, Tad always has about twenty balls she's juggling at one time and a couple have fire on them. So she just hasn't been able to review this application yet to make sure it's complete. That noted, if this is exactly what was approved beforehand, and I assume it is, then I don't think any of us see any kind of delays in processing this and moving it forward. Ms. Polidoro, do you want to pop in there for a moment?
I guess we'll need to say that we can't give your lender the exact assurance they're looking for at this time because there's just no way to pre-vote before the actual vote. But, you know, absent any change in circumstances or major, you know, substantial new information, it would be arbitrary and capricious for the board to come to a different decision.
Mr. Kaufman, this is recorded. If you want to go over and cut a copy out from you.
So I thank you for addressing that. This is, of course, on Jeffrey Groves Estates on North Cross Road. And so unfortunately, the the initial request to eliminate the lot lines was really only for the townhouses, not the road. And that was a mistake anyway. So in our attempt to reverse that, the county says they don't, they have no way to reverse their action. So the suggestion made by the county and the board seemed amenable to just recreate and refile the exact lot lines that were eliminated, which is Blair Road and the thirty-eight townhouses. None of the other lots, whether it's on Daniel's Way, the other road, and the open space lots or the sewer treatment plant lot were affected by it. So that's what we filed. I not cluttered this map with anything but the lot lines because in the, in the plans themselves, I have, we have put in that the terms and conditions and obligations and restrictions that were placed on these lots and this subdivision from two thousand and eight and twenty twenty remain in full force and effect. So there was no need for me to restate all the easements and things of that nature. I know that Ms. Moss has spoken with our surveyor, with Mike Dalbo, and he's gone over the information with her, and he said that his initial look seems to be that it is identical. So barring some surprise, I should be able to, I hope that you guys will recognize that that was a mistake and we're going to fix it. And then we can proceed. And I appreciate your working with me and supporting this.
As you know, the planning board is a pro-development board, as long as it fits in with our code and we're able to mitigate any potential negative impacts. That's already been all looked at over here, so we do want to work with you, as you know. I just want to point out that this is a very unusual situation. I'm not sure we've ever had this happen before. That's why Tad is also taking extra time. She's not looking enough. Because in terms of record-keeping, when you dissolve it, the original subdivision is gone. So a lot of this is record-keeping as well. What Tad needs, she's also in charge of record retention. And that's all, those are all legal requirements. So we're just making sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. That's really it. Anything else?
I have something here. Lou, who is going to, who's going to prepare the new, like, Platts? And who's going to be, who's going to be responsible for stamping and signing them?
Mr. Kaufman, did you catch that? Is he frozen?
I don't know.
Yes, he's frozen. Well, nobody else is on this application, or the other people who are here are just Crofton Muse, so we'll discuss that later on.
I can answer that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you, everyone. We'll look forward to seeing you at a future date. Once we get through, for Crofton Muse I'm talking about, once we get through our session with Victoria, okay? Thank you all, then, and have a happy Thanksgiving. We don't see you before that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members. Appreciate it.
Next item is a workshop discussion still, although we're about to, I hope, move this into public hearings so we can start hearing from the public on it. This is Camp Victory Lake. This is a large camp that's located on the north side of Cromellville Road. The actual address is two seven seven. It's also bound on the east side by North Quaker Lane. I think most people are familiar with it. This has been under discussion since I was first appointed seventeen years ago for master site plan. Master plan, I should say. However, the applicants, after many years of raising funds, et cetera, are ready to move forward. I think most of the board thinks this is kind of an exciting and interesting project. And Mr. Sander, I believe, is here tonight. So Peter, let me turn it over to you.
Hey, everyone. Peter Sander, again, from Renia Engineering. Good to see you all again. Here representing the applicant, just to kind of kind of summarize the project again. This Camp Victory Lake, we're proposing a forty-seven thousand plus or minus square foot build, religious sanctuary for larger events to kind of supplement the camp's existing use. As part of phase one of this project, there's multiple improvements, including new parking areas, a new drive, and, and just in new pedestrian space. This is phase one of the proposed project, which is for an overall master plan that's been prepared for the site. So we got to get through this one first, and then we can move on to the other ones. Other than that, to just kind of give everyone an update, we submitted revised site plans, revised Seeker narrative, numerous revised items included in part of that Seeker narrative was the long-awaited traffic study. And we added that and added a little summary on to our portion of it. Other than that, we look forward to hearing your guys' comments.
You also very thoughtfully provided a list and, excuse me, and dates of large gatherings, different activities as they go on for the summer for us to evaluate as part of your crowd control kind of plan. One thing I do want to say is that I, we, we had a little slip-up. You did not receive the C P L memo. No, no, it's just, it's, when we had Pete and Liz Axelson, the planner, I think Liz would always take Pete's portion, put it into hers, and then she would conclude, she would send it to us and say, this will be sent by separate email to the applicant. And Pete probably didn't ever notice that because I think, Pete, your section was, as I said, grafted into Liz's.
Well, no, I mean, it was sent, it was sent to, you know, Renia. It just got lost. It got lost in Rich's email.
Yeah, so we ended up having another discussion. So it had been sent, but because Rich's emails get kind of clogged, and he was heading out for a week to go visit some colleges, he just didn't see it. So it never got really to my desk to, so I could do a response for it.
Yeah, so we'll copy you, Peter, from now on, along, along with Rich.
Thank you, Peter. I, I, well, I'm behind on emails myself, speaking of clogs. So I didn't realize that, but as long as we're still operating the same way, then that's perfect.
Yes.
But I do want, I do want, Peter, congratulate you and Rich, et cetera, over at your side because it really is really complete. We're ready to circulate tonight, which is what I think you want to hear.
Awesome.
And we're ready to set a public hearing as well. So, Mr. Sotero, comments?
No, because we didn't, we didn't have any updates. But the one thing that I would ask is, Peter, when are you, have you submitted the traffic study to the Department of Public Works yet?
No, it has, it's kind of figuring that after this meeting, we'd be able to discuss it and have that conversation, get it circulated.
Yeah, because I think you got to get to them because, I mean, we've been in the process now for a while and they're the ones that are going to be ultimately responsible for the access. And also, I'm sure they're going to have a lot of input into the event management plan. So, you know, I encourage you guys, I encourage you guys to get that into them.
Yeah, I will try to make that priority and get it submitted either this week or very beginning of next.
Great.
That's a good comment. Kate, thank you. Ms. Franson?
Good evening. So I did prepare a memo, and really, you addressed the vast majority of the comments I had. It was very comprehensive, and I appreciate that. There are some items that I have raised, some limited comments, which are really substantive in nature, and I think that the planning board can address them along with whatever comments arise out of the public hearing process. So just some highlights, the lighting levels in terms of the Kelvin value are around five thousand K. Generally, you like to get around twenty-seven hundred to three thousand so that it's a warmer color as opposed to a whiter, more stark color. So I think that's just something to discuss. I did note that, as you have stated, all the trees are going to be cleared from the disturbance area and that ultimately, the planning board should decide if the landscape is ample. And so you did supplement the landscaping, provided additional plantings. And I think we just need to weigh in, planning board needs to weigh in on whether that's acceptable. Retaining wall, we just need to know how it's faced, you know, the aesthetics of it. You know, you are leaving the dumpster location where it's proposed, so they should just, you know, determine if that's acceptable. I really would like to see North Quaker Lane, the stone wall and the tree line that will be retained. Just be very clear as to what's remaining because it does provide that screening to some extent. And then there are architectural details of the buildings, you know, provided renderings your architect has. But I think, you know, as we go along in the process, we'll need to finalize those as well, including if there are any other buildings that are being constructed, cabins, et cetera. And then I'll leave on that last reference cabins. I thought there was a discussion or somewhere I thought it was understood or heard that the cabins, that they may need to be relocated, but I may have misunderstood that. So, Michael, perhaps you can.
No, Bonnie, that's actually, I believe, I believe that's emerged in discussions with the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
They're there seeking both an area variance, or I'm sorry, a height variance for the size of the sanctuary, the height of the sanctuary. They're also, religious sanctuary, they're also looking for stream corridor variances, I believe. We have a hundred foot on either side from the center line. And it's my understanding that the majority of the Z B A expressed interest in rather than giving that, than having those relocated. But Peter could probably answer that better than me.
Yeah, so we had discussed having those relocated. I mentioned during the meeting that many of the areas that we could relocate them also kind of has this similar problem and affects the future of the master development plan. It also kind of spaces them out a little further away. So I was going to try to hold, hold fast on the location. We're providing a erosion control plan. And it really does create that nice aesthetic of looking out over the lake. So that's, that's kind of where we currently stand on that.
Okay, well, thank you. You know, I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of sort of the status of that because it may result or may not result in a project change depending on the outcome of the Z B A. So those are really, those are really my comments. And again, I'm sure that we'll be addressing them as we continue through the review process. Thank you.
Before I go, I wanted to, anyone else, so when, you know, most of us are, most of us, let me rephrase that, Anne and I, when we were first appointed, there were Greenway guidelines. And in there, they were still evaluating metal halide or sodium halide, like sodium and metal halide lighting. Nobody uses that anymore. People use L E D lights. Back then, we discussed foot candles. That was it. Now we're discussing Kelvins. I've already done the research to look all of this up because I felt compelled to a while back when we, I first heard of hearing about them. But can you explain why you think, because we don't have any Greenway guidelines to discuss this. They haven't been updated in so long. Can you explain why five thousand seems too bright, too harsh, and the twenty-five hundred or twenty-seven hundred seems more appropriate?
So you're speaking to me, Michael?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, so it's just come through various planning documents. So, so it's just come through, um, various planning documents, lighting documents, also dark sky, uh, standards, that, uh, it's determined that 2,700 Kelvin is a warmer temperature. So you're heading towards sort of the yellow colors. It's softer. Um, actually, it's supposed to be better in general on the environment as well. And then as you start to increase Kelvin values, the color starts to get whiter. And, um, it is much more starker, uh, there's much more of a contrast. Um, you know, I think we also have some higher, uh, spot, uh, for candle values that are higher, uh, not necessarily related directly to the color. But again, I think the trend, if you're looking to pursue, um, dark sky policies in general, you know, in addition to not lighting up and having full cutoffs and other things, uh, there's also a desire to keep your LED Kelvin values lower. And so, you know, whenever that's possible, wherever it's possible, uh, many of the communities, uh, that we work with do try and, you know, keep the limit around 2,700 up to 3,000.
So, board members, I know this is somewhat new in some cases. Uh, we are required under Greenway guidelines to be dark sky compliant. And that's why we also do not generally allow uplighting, uh, et cetera. And in this area, I just want you all to consider that it's a fairly rural portion of our town as we head that direction. For me personally, I think the lower Kelvins seem appropriate. Um, Peter may want to weigh in, uh, as to why they're proposing something higher. But in a way, this is also kind of like the old discussion under Greenway where you had the two different kinds of bulbs. One was considered to be more appropriate, like if you're in a high criminal area, like by a bank or something, because the police prefer to have that harsh white light because they can see better in cameras, et cetera. Whereas people don't like it. It's too bright for many people, but it's kind of like a high-security area. The lower levels, which are softer and prettier to most human eyes, um, were areas like I would think this area would be. Um, the other thing to note is that we've had considerable discussion over the years about foot candles. Whenever we see the hotspots, as Bonnie called them, I think in your memo, you had, there were 16 to 20. I, I had a hard time reading the values myself, um, but they were bright spots. So generally, the board has taken the position that if these are LED and they're just a small spot and they reduce down quickly, then we've allowed them to be acceptable or found them acceptable, particularly because we want the overall, the balance for the overall site. And Peter, I should have told you this before, you can calculate what the foot candles are as a balance for the overall site. That helps us got, be guided in terms of hotspots because they shouldn't be, the overall should not be above a two, uh, per Greenway guideline still. I have a feeling with all the dark areas you have that it's going to be probably lower than two. Um, but that's, that's basically where we're going, and I would like board members to weigh in. If you'd like to also see a lower Kelvin, a warmer color, in other words, of lighting, particularly in this area. And Peter, do you, do you want to add anything as to why the 5,000 was proposed? Do you know?
Yeah, so the 5,000 was proposed, um, because my lighting guy said that that's your typical for parking lots, just in general, because of that high security, it provides that brighter light, gets a little more clarity when seen. Um, but yeah, so if the board would like to see it reduced from 5,000 Kelvin, we did put dimmers in it, and that would be motion activated so that they reduce the light levels when nothing is active. But if the board would like to see it, then that'll be no problem.
Thank you very much, Peter, as always. Um, Victoria, comments?
Hi, um, just that we have a resolution prepared tonight, um, to start the circulation process. It's a Type 1 action because it disturbs more than 10 acres and possibly for other reasons.
Thank you. Right, and Ms. Moss, comments?
No comments tonight. I'll look over the landscaping plan changes.
Thank you. And let me start to my virtual right all the way down. Ms. Denapoli, comments?
Yes, in terms of the lighting, night skies should always be the priority, so the lower warmer lights would be useful. My one question that I do have is regarding the, um, dumpster. Um, based on what Bonnie had stated in her comments, that the dumpster is, is, is in the way of the walkway? If I understood her comments, sidewalk?
Uh, that there is... Yeah, that'd be great. It's, it's, it's basically, there's... Yeah, I think that'll really speak volumes, seeing it. Uh, not yet.
It's this area.
Yeah, you've got to shift a little bit.
How's that? Does that work? No?
I'm not seeing anything myself.
I see it.
Here, I thought I could have handled this.
I can see it.
And alas.
I saw it.
I can see it.
I can see it.
You can see it?
Yeah, me too.
Awesome.
There's Anne, there's Bonnie.
There's Peter. You.
There's me.
What am I doing right now?
We don't know. I don't know.
I had it shown to the screen. Oh, yeah, I'm having a real blast.
You're sharing, you're sharing your desktop. There you go.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, uh, where is it? Yeah, for whatever reason, I had it shown on the other side. There it goes. I think my, my computer's just being a little slow. Oh, did I freeze out of existence?
You had it.
Everyone? So you had it? All right, hold on.
It, it was a minor...
Ah, that's it. Something is freaking out.
I can probably bring it up myself.
No, now I'm determined.
Okay. We can deal with this. I mean, it was a minor question, that's all.
Here we go.
Yes.
Is this showing?
Yes, it is, Peter.
I did it. Here we go. Yeah, so our intention really behind, so you can't really tell because this isn't the grading plan, but this is a fairly steep hill over here. And so in order to kind of provide that access for when the garbage truck comes in, this really gives it the best course of action. On that, we have stormwater over here. Um, I mean, we could possibly hide it over in this corner. Uh, then the retaining wall would screen it, but then it's a dumpster within the fire access lane, so...
Okay, I was just looking at whether there were potential alternatives so that it's not this, you know, again, curb cut. But it, again...
Yeah.
Up to the planning board. And I don't know the extent to which it would be disruptive.
I mean, we, we are doing a, a kind of a curb cut, so it's just going to be ramped in that area and then continue. So, I'm hoping that it really won't be disruptive at all, and we have plantings proposed around it to kind of buffer and screen it.
My question.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Um, thank you very much for some of those, uh, renderings you, you provided. Um, I did have a comment or suggestion about the retaining wall. Um, because of the earth tones on the building and kind of like, you know, the whole feel I get from the building, I would suggest that you look at a product called Outcropping Wall by Rosetta Stone. They come in a series of, uh, 12 different stones ranging from like two foot to six foot, and it will give you like a real natural feel, but using large, uh, boulder stones to help navigate that grade. Um, I think it would really complement the design you have going on right now.
Okay, so just to kind of give you a little more background, the, uh, the current one that we're proposing is a, um, a sloped concrete retaining wall. Uh, just because of the, the height dis, difference in there, when you, when you have those stacked blocks, it actually gets a little harder to do at, or hold back higher, um, levels of contour changing. So, uh, I think the blocks are going to be a little difficult for that area, but we get to look into having a stone veneer or something placed along it.
Are you doing like gabions?
No, no, we were gonna do a poured concrete. Here, I can pull the details.
I mean, you should, you should be able to do some kind of, uh, uh, ready rock wall or something there.
Well, that, that's, you know, this is, what I'm suggesting is a nicer version of a ready rock, and it's actually a little bit more cost-effective.
Is it?
Yeah, but rather than having a poured wall with a, with a veneer face, I, I think it would, just, you know, if you could take a look at it, I think it'll...
Yeah, definitely.
Be a better fit.
How tall is, how tall is it, Peter, the wall?
I think we got around 10 feet at its highest spot.
I mean, that's, you know, I, I don't, I mean, look, you guys can go look at it, but, you know, for that like height, I don't think that's worth doing a poured, uh, like wall. I don't think that's going to be cost-effective.
No.
Yeah, yes, we got 12...
Ready rocker, the other wall that Chris is suggesting.
Yeah, when I, when I seen the poured wall, I was, it didn't seem to really make sense.
Okay.
Just go look at it. Just look at it. It's fine.
Thank you.
My notes?
I think to my point, it would, I was just going to say to my point, you know, you're spending a lot of time and effort and expense on the building, and so, you know, the retaining wall is right there within the view of the building, so it's nice to somehow tie it in and, and, you know, have some kind of architectural treatment if possible.
I don't know if you guys can, can see this or not, but...
Here, I'll, I'll stop.
That's kind of what it would look like on a large scale.
That, Chris, I see what you mean. It fits the sort of Adirondack style of the building itself. I know what you meant there.
That was, and it's not extremely expensive, so it would actually, you know, it's, it's not a bad option just to look at.
And Peter, generally speaking, if we have a poured concrete wall, the board, not generally speaking, we do require it to be, have some sort of stone veneer. A good example would be, uh, the antique store that has the pond in front of it, uh, on Route 9. There's a wall that was done by DOT, but that was specified, more or less, uh, a lot of us helped with how they did it. So that's, that's actually poured concrete that was stone veneer on top to try to match in with the existing historic stone walls we have throughout the town. Um, Chris, those are great comments, and could you tell me real quickly the name of the Rosetta Stone something series you said?
Out...
It's just outcropping. I have it pulled up on the screen. Here, if you guys want, I'll show that screen instead. So, Outcropping Collection.
It's great looking.
Wow, some of it looks very Flintstones.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
That, that's, that's, looks really nice.
Yeah, I think with the way the building is designed, it would, you know, it'd be a real compliment to the landscaping.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect. Yeah, we'll look into that one.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
I'm sitting here getting dive bombed by ladybugs. I have to keep like going, eh, um. I wanted to just talk about the lighting a little bit. Um, I, I agree, um, dark, dark sky is very important, but so is safety, and so I do, it seems I'm noticing that if, if the lights are softer, they don't seem to illuminate as well as a bluer, whiter light out in a parking lot. Um, and I don't, again, I don't know enough to, to, to know like how strong those lights are. But, um, so I just would require, um, that we take care of our dark skies, but also keep safety in mind so that people feel like there, there's not a lot of shadows or places where people can hide.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we were going with when we were designing that, is that lighter fixture, the kind of lesson, but... Yeah, if we, if the board would just, uh, if they could reach a consensus, whether they want the lower Kelvin or the higher Kelvin, doesn't particularly, uh, matter too much on my end.
Thank you. That's why I'm asking each person to kind of weigh in on that. Anne, did you have any other comments?
No, I'm, I'm happy that we'll be moving this forward.
Me too. Ms. Wosser?
Uh, real quick, Michael, I'm, I'm also fine with lowering the Kelvin. I forgot to weigh in on it.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Stephanie?
Well, uh, I, I'm also okay with lowering the Kelvin, um, as long as we think there's enough cone of light, you know, to provide the safety. And, uh, I think my colleagues and our professionals have, uh, made all the comments that I could, and more, and more. Thanks. I don't have anything to add to them.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
Yes, first I want to thank you for, uh, in the past and present, you take on all our inputs very seriously. Uh, been pretty complete on, and timely in the responses. And I think most of us really look forward to the completion approvals and, you know, going to groundbreaking. With regards to lighting, um, you know, you've, you've got a situation there where you've got probably 95, 98% of the time, it's very quiet versus you've got larger active events. So you may have some type of lighting scheme that, you know, runs it like Marist football or something where there are certain times when you've got high lighting and it's, you know, maybe a little bit different than the Kelvins versus the, uh, you know, rest of the time when you're, when it's a very quiet, you know, on a, a low-active facility. So, you know, you've got to have a balance between the cost and the safety and whatever, but there may be the rest of the board can give input, but some type of lighting scheme on versus no-active versus active events in the evenings.
Okay.
Thank you, Brett. And Ms. Weiser?
So I'm, I'm also in favor of the 2,700 Kelvin, uh, lighting scheme. If you do think that it's compromising your safety, maybe the safety of your, of your constituents, perhaps you want to add more, um, more, um, lighting poles if you think that, if you think that the lower, the lower Kelvin is going to hurt you.
Okay.
Any other comments, Anne?
No.
So, I'm going to weigh in that I also prefer the lower Kelvins, and I'm going to just offer these reasons why. First, if you read in the app, in the new materials that were submitted by the applicant, the majority of the events at this site take place during the summer. It doesn't get dark until 9:00 or 9:30. Um, I understand the need for safety, but I also believe that in generally, in most cases, uh, crime occurs in large parking lots when it's more of a commercial area so that someone's walking into a grocery store to shop and they can grab a purse. There are worse things as well, I admit. But this is, again, this is really in more of a country area. It's a rural area. And I want to be sensitive to the neighbors, uh, who are there. They're, and again, I pointed this out before, while you're going to have large events, the large events aren't really that different than what's taking place there now. Just that now they're under tents and there's more people dispersed around. In this case, the sanctuary, while it's religious in use, can also, I believe, uh, Peter has told us that it can be used for performances, things that, where it's now go around outside, that they would have, uh, temperature-controlled environments, et cetera. And if you look at the events themselves, there's a lot of people there. In some cases, they provide, I believe, some kind of security, look, not hired security, but there's security from people who live there 24, or all year round, to take a look. And so I think that the lower Kelvins seem more appropriate in this area. Again, it's not a commercial area. Um, it's actually also not that easy to get in and out. Um, if there were, you know, criminals, there's only like two ways basically to get in and out, and I feel like that there's mitigating circumstances, so it shouldn't be so bright. Um, that noted, I did think that, I liked what Brent's, what Brent had to say, which is, could it be brighter for bigger events if it seems necessary? And I take note that Peter did say that they would have dimmers, so let's, let's think on this and see. But for right now, if I counted, there's a majority of people prefer, prefer the lower warmer lighting, uh, in this area. Um, but Anne is sensible to say that we have to balance out safety purposes as well. Uh, again, as I've gone by there, there's just so many people, I don't, it never seemed like a place for this, a lot of high crime, and you have a lot of families with parents looking at their kids, et cetera, so, uh, that's where I weigh in. Otherwise, I don't really have a lot of other comments either. Um, the remaining comments from Bonnie should be addressed, uh, plus Peter's obviously, which you'll have an opportunity to do. But for the meantime, uh, we're prepared to, the resolution to circulate. We're prepared to set a public hearing to start on December 1st, um, so that we can start getting in public comment um, as a portion of our seeker review. And I believe this resolution will be introduced by Ms. Wosser.
Yes, thank you. Resolution classifying the action and referring the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Camp Victory Lake... Resolution classifying the action and referring the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Camp Victory Lake Master Plan and Phase One Religious Sanctuary. Resolution twenty eighteen dash sixty-six, October twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one. Classifies the action as a type one action and declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project. And two directs its secretary to refer the master plan and site plan set to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development. Pursuant to section two thirty-nine M of the General Municipal Law. And three directs its secretary to refer the site plan set to the Roosevelt Fire District and the Hyde Park Conservation Advisory Council. For review and comment.
Second, Anne Dexter.
Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And now making a motion to set the public hearing on this application for December first.
I'll make that motion, Anne Dexter.
Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries unanimously, Mr. Sander. As always, it's a pleasure seeing you. Well, as Anne said, this, it's like we first got a kind of skeletal form. Years ago, and now the flesh has been added, so we have a full kind of thing ready to go now. And just the refinement of the traffic study. Uh, again, I, your comments, et cetera, in there, when I read through it, I thought this is what needs to go over there. So we'll get this thing started and. Um, in the meantime, we'll also be hearing from the public. I believe that some members of the public have spoken at the ZBA. Uh, I'm not positive of that because I don't always watch their meetings. I'm not even sure they're, I think they're televised. Um, but at any rate. Uh, have a happy Thanksgiving. We'll see you in December.
Awesome. Sounds good. And also just to let you guys know, I totally agree with you about the Kelvin lighting anyways. It was my lighting guy who was putting it in my ear, so. I'll talk to him Thursday tomorrow.
Thanks, you too. Next time I'm on the agenda is continue in workshop. This is Bellafield at Hyde Park. Uh, this is for the amended concept plan that's been submitted for. The St. Andrews planned unit development. Um, I think most people are familiar with this. This is the big site you see across from the Culinary Institute of America. And it's my pleasure to say that I want to thank the board today, our consultants. For most of us, um, it was a four hour sidewalk. It includes for all the applicants as well. Uh, it shows. I believe it's a great testimony to the belief that it's important to have proper planning. It's also a good testament to. Why it's important to go out on a site and actually take a look at things. Um, I want to say I appreciate so much, Larry. Um, all the questions that were asked, your answers that you provided. Where grading would occur, where this would be the drone flights, so we'll be able to see the aerials to see what it looks like from afar. Um, I know, as always, I get a much better sense of what things are going to look like. Once I'm out there, because. When you say, hey, this will be the street and both sides will be lined by housing or estate homes or cottages. Or businesses, et cetera. It gives you a, a much better idea than just looking at it top down on paper. So, um, let me turn it over to you guys.
Well, that's great. That's great.
That's only half of us.
What are we looking at? What are we looking at?
Yeah, it, that's, that's that goofy when we're looking at, at the drone that we were doing. So, and I believe that was the final shot. We were on Main Street looking at the height. Of some of the mixed use buildings. So, let me trade over to you guys.
Okay, well, again, um, thank you, uh, everybody for, for making it out. Uh, yes, it was four hours. We met at noon and, uh. Wrapped up at four, the, um, the support vehicles, which, uh, gosh, I'm glad we had those. They carried the water, bug spray and. Whatever additional support that we needed, we, we had that. So it all worked out good. Um, I hope the logistics all worked out. I mean, we had a lot of people there. Um, but I thought it went real well and I hope that we, again, uh. We're good hosts. We're very, very excited about our project as, as you know. And, and we're, you know, we're, we want this to get moved forward, so we're giving you the opportunity to ask questions out there, so. Neil, are you able to pull up the, um? The PowerPoint I sent over? Great, so, um. Again, so going out there, our goal was to get you to each of the five neighborhoods. We started. Uh, at, on the St. Andrews neighborhood, which we mainly looked at the proposed restaurant site. That's actually the first time. I've been up there, great view down to the Marichi Kill. Um. Then we went to the Crescent, the Ridge, the Terrace, and then we wrapped up with the village neighborhood. So we hit. All, all five, very, very busy day. Uh, we did five drone flights and, uh, they were photographed and. As soon as I receive those, I'll get those over to the board. Um, and if you can go to the next one, Neil. This, uh, so everybody can see what we did, this total. Walk, when you, when you add it all up, it's probably two miles up and down the hills through there. Um, again, um, I'm glad everybody made it out and, uh, we could present, you know, each of the neighborhoods. How, how we truly feel that this, this site plan fits, fits into. Um, the, uh, site. So really, um, since, uh, we last. Met was October sixth, uh, we, before that, on the twenty-ninth, we submitted. A very large package of materials. Um, since that time, I did have follow-up calls with. Pete and Kyle from, um. Chasen and Pete, I did receive your, your comments, so I'll get with Kyle and we will address those. But that's, uh. Yeah, uh, yes, and that's the, uh, the next batch of comments. That we have, uh, we're hoping that we're. You know, significantly done with that. Um, but, but, but please, uh. You know, I'm going to turn it over, you know, to you, Michael, and. Please, um. Please tell us where we're at.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're trying real hard. I mean, we answered all those, oh my gosh, those comments, so. And, and that includes the three, four hundred comments we got from DOH and the Water Authority, so we've. Been working really hard to move this forward.
So as I've said before, the, the, uh, project before us, or the, the path before the planning board is dual. One, we are, we're required to provide a recommendation on the revised concept plan to the town board. Um, they are then free to ignore us or whatever, but I think that they're going to be. Paying attention to what we have to say. And we've discussed internally as well as this, these meetings many a time as to what really constitutes the concept. Which would be mix of uses, overall layout. Architectural, uh, architecture and heights, uh, all that stuff. We also have, as. Kind of concomitant to that, we also have to conclude seeker. Um, we. Uh, have had several, we received some comments back. But in terms of seeker, we're also looking at visual impacts, community impacts, et cetera. So what I would do is encourage all the board members when I call upon you to speak candidly if there are any parts of the project that you think are problematic. To please, uh, mention them. If there are projects, if there are parts of the projects you think are absolutely fabulous, mention that too. Um. And then, but I will first call on our consultants as always. Let me start with Mr. Sotero, Pete.
Uh, sure, um. You know, again, we're just commenting on engineering items and, um. Uh, so I'm just going to try to hit some of the, uh, you know, the highlights. Um, one of the things that, you know, I noticed, um. Is that there was a, a cut and fill, fill plan in this, um. Uh, this goes, uh, based upon our comment three under section one point. Um, one point six. So there was a, there was a cut and fill, uh, analysis that was done. And again, it's, you know, like preliminary at this point, like it's rough, it's, they're going to have to be, have to be done again. Once detailed site plans are developed. But, uh, the Crescent area, um. Uh, the plan showed there was going to be a two hundred thousand cubic yard, um, import. Um, for that like area, so. I just wanted, uh, the section that I had noted here, section one point, one point six. I just wanted that to include, um, a discussion that. Um, as part of each individual. Phase that there may be some earth, earthwork operations in other phases. That have an excess of material. Because I assume that that material will be excavated from, from other phases. That had the excess and brought to, you know, the Crescent area. So we just want to make sure that, you know, it's clear that there may be some earthwork operations in other like phases, so. Um. Just wanted to cover.
Yep, yep, I understand.
So that's, uh.
Just.
That's fairly.
The, the, the constant area, the depth of rock is like a foot, so that's why we're bringing dirt over there.
Okay. And, uh, so Larry already talked about, we need to have a little bit of a discussion on storm, stormwater management. Um. Uh, our traffic engineer, uh, had looked over the information in the, uh, two thousand seventeen traffic update. There was an additional, um, memo from Tom Johnson, uh, at Chasen. Uh, we had several, um, phone calls, uh, with Chasen, um, Bonnie was on, um, one of them. So we're going to issue a memo, uh, but, um, yeah. Basically, our traffic engineer. Concur's with, uh, the information that's been, um, presented. That, uh, there doesn't appear to be any more, uh, improvements that, uh, are necessary that have already been. Um, built in the field now for, uh, the Route nine entrances. Uh, for the new concept plan, so the traffic improvements that were done. Um, already, uh, should be able to, um, support. The revised concept plan. So, and we're going to issue a, a memo on that. Um, so having, uh, like said that, um. You know, the, uh, you know, the traffic report and the updates have to get into the hands of, uh, the DOT. And also the county, uh, Public Works Department, because in the end. Uh, they're the agencies that have the, uh, approval over the access points. So, you know, um, we weighed in from our. Our standpoint. But we need to get their input and I, and I don't, I don't know, I mean, is that the applicant that's going to submit that? You know, directly to them, or is that going to be us through, uh, the secret process? So not sure how that's going to work.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we already circulated for seeker. Um, to all the agencies, because we were sort of reestablishing our, our. We're already lead agency, but we're good to saying it. So when we circulated, we didn't have, uh, all that data. So, um, I guess I could defer to Victoria, but I think that it's because we usually like to have our office submitted so that any. Correspondence were copied on between the applicant and the agency. Um, Victoria is offline for the moment, uh, but. Ted, does that seem like the, the proper procedure? Or Jennifer, do you think that's the proper procedure? I mean, you could, you guys can just send it directly over there to them.
Yeah, I think we're certainly planning to, uh. Consult with them, but certainly will coordinate with you. I think we share mutual goals here of making sure that. DOT and DPW get the information. DOT is very. Overwhelmed with work, so, uh, uh, I think receiving things, uh, twice won't, won't, uh. Uh, do anything but help us in getting a response back. But as, as we know, as the project gets developed. We will be addressing the questions of what's happening to traffic at the northwest corner and the intersection going to. Um, onto St. Andrews, and that's been discussed before.
Well, well, is, is that what we're trying to get from DOT? Because obviously the drives. The, the curb cuts that are there now are, you know, approved. Uh, what, what's shown on the concept plan isn't any. Different from the. Oh, seven approval. And as far as the, uh, pork chop there, I mean, we don't. You know, we don't need to get rid of that. We can keep it just the way it is. You know, to avoid any, any issue with, with DOT. It was just a suggestion, um. But, but we, we're, we're, we're not wanting to hold things up. Well, you know, we're. We have a lot of.
And the, the reason why I mentioned this is that DOT. Uh, in addition to them being, uh, overworked, as you probably put it, Ms. Ventile. They also have gotten very. Fussy about procedures. So once they assign a secret number. You must use that reference forever. If you send, if you say, hi, we've got a traffic get back study for Bellafield, you know, at Hyde Park, they'll go, what is that? You have to use our, our secret number. Because we haven't had a response. I don't know what the secret number is on this, so. I kind of suggest that you guys get it to them. I, I, like, like Larry said. Uh, you're, do, do they have any permitting authority left for you in this?
We, we have the secret number, so.
Oh, you do?
We could. You know what? We'll be proactive. We'll go for it. You know, with, uh, with, with DOT. Uh, Tom and I just got a bond.
DPW also, and DPW.
You know, release from them. It, it took, it took a long time. They're, they're, they're swamped.
Okay, so listen, so, you know, um. You know, as, as long as the board, you know, is comfortable that our traffic engineer. Uh, you know, like reviewed it and doesn't, you know, thinks that it's okay. You know, just for us to get through the concept plan and, you know, the secret process. I mean, I don't necessarily think we have to get something back from, um, DPW and from. You know, the state. I mean, it would be nice that they like concur that. You know, the new concept plan doesn't, doesn't have any more like impact than the prior plan, but if it's going to go hold up things. Right, now, I mean, I understand, I get it. So I think that's something we can have a discussion on outside of the meeting.
This is where I'm going to pop in and say that I have, I have. The advantage of being in this chair for seventeen years is I've established some relationships with some of these agencies, and I keep writing to them saying. You have thirty days to respond. If you do not respond within thirty days with a letter that says. We have no objection to becoming lead agency, but we may have comments down the line. I don't know that they're. They may have no issue with seeker. In other words, technically, we don't need to hold up seeker. We can say you had your thirty days, you didn't respond. It's particularly.
That's fine.
Irritating to me that we, that they don't even bother to say, yes, here's the response within thirty days. But please wait because we are still analyzing. We'll have comments. Because it's disappearing to a void. So there I get off my soapbox, sorry.
No, so that's good. So we'll figure that out. So, you know, we can, we can go figure that out. Um.
And I'll just add here that, uh, there's a big difference between the concept plan level of review. Than the future build out over many years. And what I was alluding to when I, uh, first spoke of this was the, um. Uh, the study that the board did at the time of the site plan review for, uh, the inn at Bellafield. Right, to decide when the various conditions that had previously been imposed under the old approval would be. Uh, appropriate. So I think for concept plan, the board has fulfilled. Uh, the letter and the spirit of the law in circulating to DOT. And, uh, and has every right to rely on its own consultants in reviewing, uh, the traffic report that was submitted. For the concept level of review.
Thank you, Jennifer. I certainly agree with that.
Well put. So just a couple other things. So along the traffic lines, uh, there was something in. Um, of section two point seven. That had referenced in the two thousand seventeen amended secret findings about the installation of a, a median on St. Andrews Road. From Route nine to the current Saki, um, driveway. Now, I don't remember that and what that was for. But it basically said in, you know, the documents that. Uh, that, uh, they don't feel that it's, you know, required. And I don't remember who. Who required that, whether that was, you know, the county, or maybe it's not even a big deal at this point, but I just. You know, noticed it and, uh, noted it in my, you know, memo. I don't remember why there was a median proposed there, but.
So Peter, um, I may be wrong, but I believe this was, this is on the, this is on the north side of the intersection of St. Andrews and Route nine, correct?
Uh, the north side. Uh, yes, yes.
So when the applicants, well, when the prior applicant was required to create the median, the planted median. At the south side of the intersection for a forced right turn. There was, that would make now three lanes. And so they would have two lanes left that would go north. And obviously, this is where the four lane ends and it would force. Those two lanes to go into one lane on the north side of that intersection.
Yeah.
I thought that had been abandoned. I, I, maybe I'm wrong. I thought that had been abandoned because it doesn't seem like a good idea to have. Two lanes of traffic going north to suddenly have to narrow down into one right in front of a grocery store. A lot of things, I mean, Saki manufacturing now. Um, so, but we should, that's something we should clarify.
And again, that could be something that's more of like a site plan thing as we get down, uh, you know, the road. I just. Uh, noted it, uh, as I saw it, so. Uh, I talked about the cut and fill. So as far as, uh, the plan set goes. Um. You know, it was a good, um, plan set. Uh, Larry already talked about, need a little bit more information on, um, stormwater management. Um, I talked about the cut and, cut and fill, um, conceptual plan. Um, there was a bunch of roadway, um, cross sections which were very helpful that. uh related to a map, uh and they were numbered. Not going to go through them all. The only thing is, I do want to mention that we talked about the potential for bike lanes. So I put that in there. It's something we should discuss and um there was also a couple of the cross sections that had um notes there about option optional curbing. So as we get into it, it's just something we're going to have to um to look at. Um, curbing does um does two things. It channelizes drainage on the road to uh basins. And then it also in sections where they're proposing a sidewalk, it provides um protection to uh the pedestrians. So if there's not a curb, uh the sidewalk has to be set back farther from the edge, from the edge of the road. So uh again, that's something that we'll just have to go over. And again, it's not, it's not a huge issue for this, for this like round, but uh just something that we'll need to look at. So those are the highlights. We've got some other things, but they're minor.
Thank you, Pete. Um, Ms. Franson, comments?
Uh, at this point, I was really waiting for the opportunity to get out into the field and see the site. Um, and so it really was uh eye opening, uh very informational, and I'll be getting my comments out. Uh, my first round of comments really were about inconsistencies and gaps so that we understood, you know, what the, what the project was and that we were all on the same page with, with all the information. So I'll be issuing those um shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Paul Doro, any comments?
No, just reiterating that the sidewalk, I think, really helped me visualize the project and um when we go through the seeker process, really narrow down the areas of concern.
Thank you. That's very well stated. Ms. Moss, any comments? Thank you for joining us today.
Yes, no, I I don't have any comments right now. Thank you. But the sidewalk was very beneficial. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So um in calling on board members, I'm going to start because as I said, I've encouraged everyone to speak very candidly uh tonight, if there are any issues that bug you. And my first, my actually, my biggest issue, honestly, until I'm going to withhold anything about the heights until we see with the zones, uh the, I'm sorry, the drone uh recording show. But after walking the site and taking a look at it from the plans, reading all the narrative you provided, including uh the newest revisions, I still think there's too much density. And the the comment over and over again is that the commercial program needs the density to support it. I've already made this comment once, and so I'll make it again. Almost fifty percent of your non-residential, your commercial application is to hotels. Hotels do not need the residents there to make it. Further, Ms. Wasser, I believe it was way back when said, at this site, because this is supposed to not just draw tourists from outside the region, but it's also supposed to draw people from the area as well as people from Hyde Park to come down and take advantage of what's there. I don't think that this dense, this much density is really required to support the commercial program. We're talking about a series of restaurants and performance spaces, uh cidery, winery, you know, experiential things. I think that these are well planned and designed, and I have no, I I'm positive they're going to be. Um, this is a quality, this is a high, high quality and high, high impact project. I think that you're going to have people from, maybe not coming all the way from Millbrook. I think you'll have people coming even from Rhinebeck and Red Hook coming down here because it's going to be a fun place to stroll and tour. I don't think that that much density is warranted uh because of that. And I want to go back to point out that the original criteria is that this is supposed to be fifty percent residential, fifty percent non-residential. The increase that's being requested to me is just too high. And the reason why I'm saying that is, and I may get outvoted. It's just that um in shaping how our comment's going to go to the town board on the overall concept, I think density is definitely one of the most important characteristics of the concept uh itself. In other words, how many people are going to live there, what's going to do our town? The proposed density would increase our population anywhere from eight to ten percent, depending on the number of children. Again, that's not a bad thing, but it's very impactful, as I said, both positively and potentially negatively. But I haven't seen a justification that would allow me to sign on and say, yes, I'm recommending the town board that they go to this much higher area of residential density than what it was. In other words, I think that what Larry was asking today and earlier tonight in a very oblique way was are there any plan changes we need to get to? Yes. And that to me, that's certainly for me, probably my two biggest issues would be, one is how much density is proposed, and the second would be visual impacts uh based on the heights that are proposed, which in general are much taller than any other buildings we have in Hyde Park, with the exception of St. Andrews. Now, again, I'm going to speak out of the other side of my mouth. This planning board, I'm proud to say every person on here cares about architecture, every person. I don't doubt that these buildings, and taking a look at the design guidelines that we developed with Nicole and Nicholas are, they're going to guide it, and it's going to be a beautiful sight. So it's not as I'm saying that the buildings that are taller are going to be hideous and we're going to look awful. That's not the case. It's just that visually, we're still a small town. We're the transition line between all the urban and so go ahead and say it sprawl that goes south of us from Poughkeepsie, almost all the way down to eighty-four. And when you leave Hyde Park, you go into a rural area. You definitely experience a, a rural feel when you get to Rhinebeck and slowly to Red Hook. And then once you're in Columbia County, well, you know, you're really in the rural areas. So I view Hyde Park as, again, that transition line. I believe Supervisor Rohr, and I should add here quickly, thank you to Supervisor Rohr and definitely Supervisor Krepnik. I forgot, they were on the sidewalk with us today, of course, because this is in their purview as well. Um, but I believe Supervisor Rohr said that sometimes it's that people think this is where upstate begins in Hyde Park. And I've always taken that to heart because I I feel like it is. And I I there are some sites, some plan changes maybe that need to be worked out. I'm thinking about the fields, about a buffer. But those are my only three issues left, and I want to at least weigh in because right now I think that density is too high. Otherwise, I think the project is nicely designed. Um, today, seeing the location of the first garage, seeing the height of it, seeing the distance back, I am much more comforted with that. Uh, I know that the design, the exterior design on that, the architecture is proposed is something nicer than your usual standard two-floor parking garage. But uh I don't think it's going to be as upfront as what I feared at first, when I got a chance to see it today. I will point out that there is a ground level parking, I believe, to the forefront of the building between the garage and Route nine. But which is why when Larry was asking, do you want the fields? Do you want the buffer? In my head, I was thinking the buffer. Because to get the fields to be growing properly, you're going to have to take down a majority of the trees. That doesn't mean that in the buffer that I don't think that you can do some limbing up, some um vista planning, because I don't want this to be blocked by an entire row of forest. But I think that to soften the imagery that you're going to see, that it would be, in my opinion only, remember, I haven't heard from anybody else, but it'd be better to have the fields either relocated and have something more native there uh as well. Again, that's just my uh comments tonight. Let me start to my internal right, that means. So Vice Chair Dexter, any comments?
It was a lovely walk and um I'm so glad that they had the logging roads there because uh the chairman and myself walked that site before anything had ever been done on it like fifteen years ago. We came out, we had all, we were covered in ticks and tons of prickers all in our socks. And um so thank you. It was, it, the site. I felt like I got all of the site into my head at one point, I all, all at one point. So um it's, there's a lot to consider. And um you know, as I'm, as I'm walking through some, I think my biggest thought was I wanted, I want to see the village developed like first. I'd love to see this project be really organic. And you know, you get the hotel up in the lower southwest corner, and then you build on that with the, with the village, and you get that kind of obviously not all filled in, but you get that pretty much set. I think that helps with the housing up on the ridge and in the crescent because, I don't know, I'm like, some of those sites are going to be so beautiful, but if you if the village is like always under construction, who's going to want to live there? If I keep looking over and you're moving earth every, every other six months. So I'd love to see the village. That's where we set our goal is to get that done because organically, that's how it's going to hap, that should, that should be how it happens is we define that village, you've got um city winery, which is so exciting, and you've got some great ideas, and I know you've got people ready, you know, just, they just want to move forward. So I want to see the, the village. And then that, I think, will help to determine the housing part. And I, you know, I think I have a concern with the density, but on the other side of it, you kind of need that density for a project like this. So um, but I do want to see organic growth. So I want to see, I want to see the village. I want, I want our sites to be on buil, building that village. Um, so it has apartments, it has well, it has uh destination places, it has the beauty. You know, you've got such great ideas. I want to see that done first. Um, and then I think everything else would grow out of that. And it would just be natural and and people would be on board for a lot of this. It would be, it would sell itself. Um, but it's still a lot for me to absorb. Um, but you know, I've lived here a long time. Um, I keep talking about the arbors that are are literally just due south of this project, all in the same kind of topography. Um, and I would encourage my, my, my colleagues to go check that out. Um, and remember, this was built in, they were built in like nineteen seventy-two. And architecture wasn't really the strong point, so don't really look at that. But I mean, they're, they're perched on ridges and I don't know, they've done a good job. Um, it's a, it's a good approach, I think. And they've got some of that terrace, you know, the back, the back goes out over a um a drop, you know, so there's some some similarities. And you know, so we've already done this in, in Hyde Park. And some of the townhomes that they're talking about go right behind here and look at Pine Brook. It's also a very similar proposal, I think. It's, it's something you could look at and go, oh, okay. And people, people like that site too. So um I'm, I'm excited about this, and I want to, I want to get us uh all singing together and moving forward.
Those are great comments, Ann. Those were great comments, particularly I think about the idea of who'd want to live there while you had a lot of construction going on in the village? And also, the village is where you would go to find services, to dine, and et cetera. So I agree with you. Let me go now next to my inner left. Ms. Wasser, comments?
Uh, yes, and I, you know, I've written them down. And then as the comments began, uh, I really appreciated Victoria, specifically her comments about let's wait till the drones. We see, you know, that material come back so we can better understand some of the vistas. But I do want to start by saying that the sidewalk today, reiterate how helpful it was, how much I appreciated it, and thank Larry and the whole team and everyone who was there because uh when you walk up along those ridges, which is a big concern of mine, and try to get a handle on how many trees would be cleared and how visible this would be from other places. Um, I got much more comfortable with the crescent, specifically with the crescent and the ridge today. Again, pending the drone films. Um, so it was incredibly helpful. It was also pleasant. It was nice to get to know the team better. Um, and then I go to Michael's comments, which um minor, he spoke for me, but I'm just going to reiterate it because I think it's important at this point in time to hear specifically from each person. Um, especially in the seeker and the visual impact. I still feel strongly, I, I at this point could not approve the residential amount that's in the village. I feel it's too dense, and I'm not comfortable with the bulk and the massing either. And I would, and I, and the ratio, I'd like to see the housing, commercial ratio in the village come back specifically in more in balance and see destination retail and some more restaurants. In instead of so much housing, uh specifically in the village I'm talking about now. So um and again, with the same visual impact comment to mine as currently sketched, and I know it's a sketch, it's not final drawings, but it's still too visible from Route nine. It's such a wonderful dense green space. I mean, you ask about the barn as signage. I don't love that idea. But if you could really hide and screen like the CIA, more of the buildings in the village and reduce the bulk of it and the density, I would feel better about having, you know, the red barn out there as a, as a marker. Um, I think those are my comments, um which uh dovetail with some of my colleagues.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Let me go back now to my other right, my virtual right, Mr. Oliver comments.
We're doing like a flip floppy for.
Yeah. It's mental gymnastics.
So first off, thanks again uh to the Bellfield team for the sidewalk. I think it was uh very helpful and nice to be able to visualize, you know, all of these ideas. Um, I've kind of taken a little bit of a different approach as I'm reviewing this for uh conceptual approval. Um, and a very granular base and and not looking at it in terms of you know, this is a new site because it is, it does have a prior approval. So the way that I kind of attacked this was to go through the um the narrative that was provided by the team and really use the comparisons uh on what was approved in two thousand and seven versus what's being proposed. And one of the things that I thought was really interesting because I do know that the height has been, you know, an ongoing issue and in two thousand and seven, it was just approved as a five-story hotel, three-story, mixed use, and two and a half story for the residential. There was no, no talks of any heights. So then I was like, you know, wow, the level that this team has put together with going to the extent of outlining the height of every single uh unit was pretty, pretty commendable. And then looking at it on the uh sidewalk with the topography and and on the plans, I, I think that it's really gonna fit into the site and it, and it has to happen organically to Ann's comment because I don't think a site this large can just be developed in one year, two year, three year, even five year. It's going to happen organically. I think the applicant will be back you know, multiple times, making changes and corrections as the markets change. And I mean, that's what we're seeing right now. And one of the reasons that I joined this board ten years ago was, you know, I care about my town and I care about the future of it for myself and my children and and future residents. And I really do, I'll reiterate, I think that this project is going to be a staple for our town and a staple for the entire uh region. And I think that rather than looking at the broad broad scale of this project as a new project versus what was, you know, the comparison of what was approved in two thousand and seven and what we're looking at right now, I see a nine percent increase in the density. And although that is a few hundred people, I think the benefits that our town is going to receive um out outweigh that. And I also, you know, I don't want to I don't want to make believe that I know more than some of these consultants and professionals, you know, like I I like to see things happen in the town. And I, I think this would be a really great project. So rather than looking at the density and and reading the studies, which, which I have read, I believe they, they call for up to like nine hundred residential units in this area to support the, the commercial that's proposed. And I, I mean, I don't want to see nine hundred units, but at the same time, I, I do want to see this go forward and you know, I, I want to figure out how we can get there um as soon as possible. And the only uh thing I would like to see added to the plan is an area for uh like play areas for the kids, fields, um like a ball field or a playground, you know, multiple areas that I think will really create like a communal space in a civic area for everybody to enjoy. Thank you.
Chris, those were excellent comments. I particularly liked that you're looking at as the extra density seems worth what the town would gain in benefits. And I also I was going to summarize by saying that I had asked in my comments whether the pocket parks that I would have actual playground equipment that wasn't really responded to. But you make a very good point because kids are going to need to go out and run around and do things. And there's not a lot of like, there's not like a soccer field, a baseball field, any of those there. Most of what are referred to as the park, are the parks or pocket parks, and they're relying on the trails to be kind of your exercise, recreation. The kids don't always like to do that. They want to play with other kids. And I think that that's an important part that we're even though we're trying to stay large in terms of our concept review, that's part of the concept again is what kind of recreational. That's part of the concept again is what kind of recreational amenities are there for families?
Just kind of allocate a space, you know, somewhere or multiple spaces in the plan, because I I really think that brings other people from the community. In, you know, whether it's for playdates or people who aren't fortunate to have those amenities on their property, they can go to another spot that might not be a school or they can meet new people. I. I just think it's a way to tie the community into the project.
That's a great point. Um, Mr. Pickett comments?
Uh, yes, I think it's obvious, at least going to the future, the Rob gets to pick up on this one, so. Go, Rob. Um, I really like Anne's input uh with regards to, I think, you know, putting a priority on the village. Um, I think. This would be a good draw, I think, for the rest. Of Bella Field and would help support in selling and in building out. Uh, the rest of the uh, the plan. I think my biggest input I'll give, and I've mentioned it before, is that. I think we need to have some type of good, you know, budgeting and look forward at least on a five years. So that uh. The city can support, you know, with municipal services, you know, with schools, fire department, police, et cetera. And that's so that whatever happens in Bella Field and the city doesn't get crosswise or miscommunicated. So. I think I, that's my biggest input. I'd like to see some type of planning and. You know, I know it's all estimates, but at least get something down harder on paper as to what some expectations are. So we can support one another. That's it.
Thank you, Brett. Um, just as a note, um, Dr. Gardner sent me a partial memo. They had some uh health issues uh up at CGR. Um, and that that's one of the things that we that we've hired them to look at. We've, we're using applicants finances to look at, but. Um, just briefly, I I share it only with Ms. Fransen because um Dr. Gardner asked me not to share it with the full board until it's more complete. But that is one of the issues that they're looking at is what are the impacts on municipal, on the municipality each year in terms of build-out? Um, you know, where there'll need to be more people hired, et cetera. So. That's gonna be incorporated into his memo that will come to all of us and the applicants is how to plan for that appropriately. Instead of assuming a full year first, a complete build-out in the first year, looking at it uh to borrow a term more organically. And also from um, instead of using an average uh analysis to look at um the margin, a marginal cost analysis. So when is the point that gets where we have to hire another TAD? When do we have to hire another Don? When do we need another police officer? When do we need more fire equipment? Um, that's all still to be resolved. But excellent comments, again, showing why we're going to miss you. Um, back over now to Ms. Anapoli.
Some of my questions are much more concrete than. Than uh visceral. Um, and I'm gonna start with the amended PUD concept. On page forty-eight, forty-nine, under variations of bulk and lot controls. Um, you said that you may need to ask the board to authorize increase the development in some neighborhoods and making others smaller. But overall, there would be no increase in the development. And it's a question, how do, how does this get accomplished? And, you know, let's say you've already developed the village. And now take another um neighborhood, how would? And if that one needs to get smaller, how does it get divided in? Does that make sense? Larry?
Yeah, yes. Um, the whole idea, I mean, obviously, if the neighborhood's developed, then 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 that goes away. Um. The idea, and I think we put a cap on it too, didn't we put a cap on it? Fifteen percent. It was, it was a fairly.
Hmm.
Low number, I thought, because first time around, we did not have a cap. So when we made this middle on the twenty-nine, we put a cap in there. So the maximum cap we could do, um, and I don't have it in front of me, I can.
No, that's okay. It's all right. And. What happens that that causes this to arise?
Market.
So one type of housing is.
There, there may be more demand for cottages than townhouses.
Okay.
So.
I just wanted clarification.
So grab ten townhouses and make them cottages.
Okay.
So this would, Diane, to answer your question as well, this would occur, I believe, when they would submit for final development plan. So. In other words, it would, it would be subdividing as well as getting site plan approval for some of these. And so even though we've been shown, say, like for the estates, you have the larger looking lots, but if the market said, hey. If they read the market to say, this needs to be have more cottages or more townhomes, something like that, then then the lots would shrink. Uh, appropriately, but that would come in under, under what we call site plan, but final development plan under the code.
Right.
And the pocket parks and the common space for each neighborhood. What is their purpose? And how big are they?
Well, they can be, you know, it's interesting, um, you know, developers pop in and they, you know, they have interesting ideas on what they want to do. And everybody does want to have community space within their own development. And that can be a playground for the kids. It could be a pool. Um, a cabana area, you know, any number of of things that um. That they want to do specifically for their development.
So it's not. I maybe I'm asking way too much, and this might not be the spot, but when I was rereading it.
It is.
What my intention like, what is the point of of public parks and the common spaces? Is this where the bocce court can be, the play field? Um, I was thinking that, you know, each neighborhood should have their own tables.
Correct.
There's, and is that in the um common space or green space or whatever you want to call it?
Well, well, you're right. So so each neighborhood that has its own HOA could have its own. Community space specific to that that HOA. Broader, broader, in the village, we have the village green. That's accessible to everybody, right? The amphitheater, everybody, and even outside. Users as well, of course. So there's both the. The uh, you know, the specific HOA. Because again, we'll, we'll have a master HOA and then we'll have a, you know, individual HOA for the neighborhoods.
Are you all thinking of a swimming pool? Or is that too far down?
Yes, yes, we are. Um. We, we, we are, we're not sure how, you know, specifically that will play out, but we do have an area for in the crescent. Um. A pavilion area that, you know, for weddings and things like that. Um. But again, um, each neighborhood. Will have the opportunity for their own specific pool and and that that's what they want.
Okay.
But, you know, again, those are great questions. They're, they're pretty detailed questions as as.
Oh, I have a few more, Larry. You're not off the hook yet.
Bring them on, bring them on.
The walking trails, is that also for the bicyclists? Are they to share or is there separate four bicycle trails?
You know, that um, when we went down to Serenby, the Serenby, you know, you walk and you bike right on the roads. You you know, and that's much bigger community than, you know, than Bellfield. And yeah, um. You know, and then as you, as you walk through it, you know, you'll find trails that cut off in specifically for pedestrians. Like today, we went up to the college neighborhood and we went to that first transect that that went down.
Yeah.
That grade-wise will fit in there beautifully. And and that's a strictly pedestrian corridor. Bikes will will be on the the various roads that go through.
On the road.
But, right, but but we don't have the width. Um. Typically through the community to have a separate bike lane. But the traffic wouldn't be, you know, so dense that you you can't ride the bike on the. On the internal road.
And will the sidewalks go throughout the?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
Neighborhood?
On the ODA, we show, you know, the different roads in the neighborhoods and uh you'll see where there's sidewalks and where there's not sidewalks.
Sorry, I'm.
And specifically, we show the route from um, from the main traffic light. You know, all the way up to St. Andrews and over, so that sidewalk route, because that is a requirement to get. The the pet access from the traffic light all the way up to St. Andrews and then over. Uh, back over to uh. Yeah.
I'm gonna edit out some of my questions because it's getting late, but I do want to put in my voice equally as loud. That it's, the density is way too much. Um, and in terms of the height of the buildings, I will. Not be as forceful until we get the drone pictures, but I am concerned about the heights. And last but not least, I totally agree with Anne's comment that. The villages should really seriously be the first development. I I think that would be so wise and smart. And it would be a great calling card. You don't have to sell it if people can see it. And you know it's gonna be great looking, so.
We, we submitted our phase two, which is predominantly the, you know, the the village.
Village, right. Well, I'm just like resupplying it.
Okay.
And and thank you so much for all that you do. You make a wonderful tour guide, so there's another occupation for you. Though you do need a red flag for that. Um, and thank you, and thank Tom.
Yeah, Tom's, Tom's on. He should be on the.
Then Tom, thank you. When we go to the point where we're dealing with the site plan. Would another walk be permissible?
Absolutely. Now, again, the site plan is the final development plan. That's where we do get into the details and I absolutely e- expect that.
Good, thank you.
Then I could put great stakes out there and really show you what's going on.
Diane, those were great questions, um, particularly the discussion about the recreational amenities. It made me remember that um when my parents were alive, they lived in Kingwood, which has been incorporated now by Houston, Texas. It was originally, it's a planned community, although at thirty-seven square miles, it's much bigger than this.
Yeah, thank you, Neil. Yep.
But the great thing was is that I forgot there's a whole series of interlocking HOAs there. There's a small HOA where they lived that was just their neighborhood. It had its own pool and you had to have a key, so it wasn't open to everybody. But then there were also public amenities spaces. Um, that included a a. Uh, offshoot of the Houston Library. I mean, there's a lot of other spaces that were open to anybody who lived inside the area. So I, now that you said this, it's made me realize, because of the interlocking nature of the HOAs, you'll have access to the public for some spaces. Like particularly if it looks green, other places it'll be just confined to the neighborhood where you are.
Correct.
That definitely helps me clarify things. So, um, anybody else have any other? Yeah.
When you make, when you do your next middle, can you include on the drawings? Exactly where the Marichu Kill and the wetlands are? So like in the scope of the project, it's so much easier for us to see where they are. Thank you.
Tom, Tom had a.
Yeah, I just heard it. It's a quick um story of the status and I got the comment. Thank you very much for those. Again, thank you for coming on the treacherous trail today. Um, we only had one person fall, so I think that's a considered success. Um, it seems like the underlying theme is density. And just so the team understands this, because we've gone round and round on this, um, and more clarification. Currently, I guess in the oh-seven plan. We have five hundred fifty-eight units.
Tommy, you just faded out. I suspect, I suspect Tom was going to. Uh, point out how much residential was there beforehand versus how much there is now.
And then the reduce of commercial. Ratios, right?
Hmm.
Which is all shown in the documents we submitted.
Right. As I said, I just remind that the ratio between residential and non-residential back then that was approved was fifty-three to forty-seven. You're proposing something much higher than that, it's sixty-two percent. So it's not so much the, it's not so much the number, it's what the impact is by changing the ratio from my, from my viewpoint. Again, I'm only speaking.
Yeah, understand.
Do we want to wait on Tom to try to come back on? I don't know what exactly.
Well, well, we're, we're still going. He'll, he'll come on when he's in a better zone.
Are there any other comments from anyone present? Uh, another side, either side, either team?
I think Anne hasn't gone yet.
Right.
Uh, that's what I was gonna call on next, but I I keep sort of getting interruptions, so I was gonna call on Anne last, but. Anybody else in these sort of pop-ins? Because I thought I saw Jennifer want to speak and I thought I saw Victoria want to speak. Am I wrong? Victoria, there.
I was gonna ask Neil to pull up the the chart so that we had the numbers handy, but um I, Anne. I also want to remind you that Anne Weiser hadn't spoken.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's just like, I thought I saw people raising their whatever. So last but not least, not ever least, Ms. Weiser.
Guys, so um, thanks so much for today. It was really, really helpful and. I'm even more excited about this project than I was in the past. I I do love this project and I really am looking forward to seeing it come through. Um, you know, I think that it's, it, there's so much of it that's so right for us, and I just want to make sure that it really feels right for Hyde Park. So, um, my main concerns are about the community character, especially in the village. So, um, you know. We talked like that, I still am concerned that a three-hundred-foot-long building, even with articulation. Can have this ma, it can have this massive feel of a football field. Again, I just don't feel that quite right for Hyde Park. And then, um, again, for the height, you know, I think I can't wait to see what the responses we see with the drone footage. And during the sidewalk today, I mentioned that I loved the twenty-foot-high first-floor retail. And then when I got, because I think that's, that's really, really cool than the, you know, the ten-foot ceilings. But then I realized when I got home that that's, that's like, that's. New York City. That's like Soho. Those twenty-foot-high retail with the ten, ten or twelve-foot, you know, apartments above that. That feels more like New York City. When we think, when I think of Main Street, um. I I I think the whole thing is in a much smaller scale, à la Reinbeck. Neil, do you want to pull up that? Um, so even though I know that these are, that these references are for, these design references are just for design reference only. But that particular scale right there is what we, we think of when we think of Main Street. And for me, and even the one right below it, that's is a bit taller and, but it still doesn't feel like this massive, massive. Height. Those are definitely, we'll get the actual heights of what of what they are in Reinbeck. But I'm thinking that still that no matter what, that the fifty-nine feet high, which is like at least twenty foot higher than that. What we're seeing here is just too much for Hyde Park. And yes, well, I love it. I do think, I just don't think it's right for this, for this particular area. Um, I do agree with my, some of my colleagues that. It does feel like there's far too much residential, especially in the village. I just feel, it feels claustrophobic almost. And I'm hoping that you would, you know, we definitely want to get us all to a yes, but I do feel that there's just too much right now. And then that doesn't feel like Hyde Park. Um, I do agree, and I did, you know, I do see that there are plans for parks all over, all over and that there will be um. Playground. So I think that I do trust you guys will have, that there'll be plenty of, you know, spaces for people. Um. And then I guess it's just like the, the massive size of some of these buildings that that make me nervous. So. Uh, and for example, just below the amphitheater, um, there are two community buildings. They're basically the same size as the hotel. And I'm like, what are those? It would be on figure one in the uh site, in the concept plan. But like, these are, those are two massive buildings that I just don't know are really, are necessarily appropriate here. So just want to revisit those things. And I think that's. You know, my, you know, my three bullet points are height with, you know, length and density.
Yeah, I, I'm actually, I'm actually back, Michael, if you want me to finish.
Yeah, please do, please do.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Um, again, for clarification, it seems like the underlying theme really is density. And I know you got the height, the massing, we can work on those, but um. yeah, I looked at this and when we first started this about a year, a year and a half ago, you know, we had the old plan, it was an oh seven plan and it was five hundred fifty-eight units, um, approved for that. And it was fifty-three percent of the project. Um, we then updated it and with uh, input from everyone here, uh, well, from, you know, Michael and Aileen about, well, do you think it's good? We can get up to a higher density on residential to potentially upwards of sixty-five percent. And we shot for that because it seemed like there was an openness to consider that. So we had all these big studies done to make sure we're not missing the mark. If it's too much, too little, what have you. What's enough to support the retail? What's enough to be community size and what have you? And, and the reports came back that I think it was nine hundred thirty-five units. And we thought that was too, too much too. And plus, we kept the engineers involved every step of the way to make sure that whether it's nine thirty-five feasible versus realistically what we could do. And I think we pared that down about a hundred units, down to about eight hundred forty units. And so really we're, we're asking to go from five hundred fifty-eight that were currently approved for in oh seven to eight forty, it's about two hundred and whatever, sixty-something, four hundred seventy units difference. And the offset would be a part of the commercial, which would be a big reduction in parking as well. And it, the ratio went from fifty-three percent ultimately to only sixty-two percent. Um, and that's why I want to understand, and I, I listened to all of you and they're great comments, but the density, we're only going up about two hundred and sixty units. Uh, I believe that's the difference to seventy, I don't have the exact number of unfortunate driving. But, and the offset of the commercial to especially the parking at a five-foot ratio and less traffic and what have you, I, I thought was, um, a, a very nice trade-off given today's market conditioning. All these studies that are saying really nine hundred thirty-five is what's needed to support the economics of the retail and the commercial. Um, and those are all third-party studies that we had. We tried to drive it one way or the other. And, and that's why I'm trying to send density of five fifty-eight to, I think, eight forty, um, is really what we're talking about. Is that, is that right? At, at this group, you know, the, the associated, um, uh, commercial that's, that's needed, that's supported by that residential is what these studies were all done. And a lot of it's in the Weizmann report. It's, I know it's a two-hundred-page report, but that's a pretty in-depth analysis. That's a pretty prominent company that did this. They didn't just, you know, do a couple of circles, three-mile circles, five-mile circles. This was a nationwide, local and, and regional study and, and we cut that back even from nine thirty-five to eight forty. And, and so really I think the delta I'm trying to understand is five fifty-eight today to eight, eight forty. And, and understand that because that was needed to use according to the studies to support this commercial, uh, piece of it. Um, is that, is that what we're all talking about?
So Tom, the difference is two hundred and eighty-two, the difference is two hundred and eighty-two units. You're asking for an increase of two eighty-two so you can get to the eight forty from five fifty-eight. Last time I did math, two eighty-two, uh, would be about a fifty percent increase from the five fifty-eight.
Right. So.
That to me is a large increase. I'm sorry, but that to me is a large increase that you're requesting.
Even offset by the reduction in the commercial piece?
No, that's the problem is that the zoning requires that there be fifty-fifty originally. Reducing the commercial to then pack it into the residential, in other words, to me does not really meet the criteria. Nor does it seem, as other people have commented tonight, very Hyde Park to have this new, basically village set by itself down, uh, at the bottom of the hill with its own sewer system. So again, you're asking for a fifty percent increase in what was originally approved in terms of the total number of dwelling units. And I'm not going to tell you where I think they should be cut because that's up to you in terms of your financial decisions. And it may be that the town board will approve the density. I've heard four people tonight, though, mention that they think it's too dense.
So, so it, so you'd rather keep it at the fifty-three percent number instead of the sixty-two percent number?
I'm not saying that. And when, you know, when you initially, well, when you spoke to, I believe it was Aileen and Neil and me maybe, and I think Tad, um, just sort of floating the idea out there. And the idea you were floating was multifamily housing because there wasn't much of that beforehand. We didn't have a percentage, but the percentage, I think I remember was it maybe going up to fifty-five, fifty-six percent. Not saying you're locked into fifty-three, but you're basically requesting again, a fifty percent increase in residential uses. And that seems really high to me. In addition, I've read every two hundred pieces, every two hundred pages of the Weizmann report. The majority of it actually did not, to me, conclude that this was necessary to support the commercial program. What it talked about in there was again, a commercial program being something that would instead serve this for people. That's why I mentioned, instead of having, say, a financial analyst, a financial advisors or real estate, uh, agents in the center where the commercial is, it'd be more service-oriented, which would include restaurants, but also, as I've said before, this quoting, uh, them, that there would be, um, hair salons, dry cleaners, that kind of thing. So yes, if you're going to have mostly service retail as opposed to destination retail, then you probably do need more residential. But one more time, almost fifty percent of your residential, we have your non-residential usage is two hotels. I don't see that you need to have that much more density in order to have people come and stay at a hotel. I think that they're going to stay at these hotels because of the location, as you said today. It's an ideal location in terms of the valley, the Hudson Valley. You're right on Route Nine, which is one of our major thoroughfares throughout the county. We don't have an interstate on this side. We only have the Teconic and then state highways like Nine and Nine G. So I think if you're going to come up here to experience the charm, that includes the charm of the amenities you're providing there, different experiential, uh, aspects to it. Uh, to quote Nicole, the biophilic aspects to it, the fact that you're able to stroll and see since nature. Um, I think all those things, in other words, will support the commercial program as well. But I don't want to argue here. I, I, I thought that.
I'm just trying to understand what, what you guys would like. And, and so if it's not five fifty-eight, it's not eight forty-four. And it's fifty-three percent versus sixty-two percent, what, what would you like to see there?
Uh, so the answer I believe would be, I can't design this for you. You would need to make plan modifications yourself to show and then get back to us. I believe I'm speaking correctly, Victoria, that I'm not supposed to tell you what we want. Uh, she's not.
I think so, I guess. Okay.
I mean, your, your job is to evaluate a proposal. So.
Well, I know, and I mean, I, I agree with that and I, I, I get that. I understand. I guess you can make, so it's somewhere between five fifty-eight and eight forty-four, somewhere in between.
Yes. Again, you're, you're, so we're looking at percentages, but the original of being fifty-fifty. Full confession, I argued back then that that probably wasn't practical. I mean, most of these sites that I've seen before do need more residential. It's just that this is a high amount of residential, particularly because you said at a prior meeting that it was, I think our last meeting, that it was premature to have a market study for the second hotel. You're asking us to have faith and go out on a limb that, that the, there's a need for a second hotel of three hundred rooms. Um, and that's, again, a big, that's, that, that alone is a quarter of all your non-residential is proposed, that one big hotel. If that were never to come into fruition and you kept building your density, your allowance you asked for, maybe go up to seventy-two percent during construction phasing, that means we would be left with a bunch of housing. And I don't think that's what really Hyde Park wants. The original zoning for this, in terms of just calculating density, but the underlying zoning, I should say, was recognized as greenbelt. Greenbelt is one dwelling unit per two-point-five acres. You're going far beyond that. And greenbelt also requires a thirty percent open space area. You've given us more than that, which is true. But because of that amount, you're still giving a lot of dwelling units per acre. That's, that's where I'm having my hard time wrapping my head around it. Particularly when the economic impacts of how this would affect the town, in my opinion, the Kimmun report didn't really fully evaluate, didn't effectively evaluate. Because we've all agreed, you're not going to have full build-out at year one. That's not going to happen. It's not possible. Um, even, even with the resources that you and your team have, you'd have to have like the resources of Disney to come and just plop down a village in one year. So. Because I can't.
It's not the resource, it's more the market. It's more the market. You're right. It's really market dictated and that's really, you know, you know, driving the whole project. But so, so residential again is somewhere between, whether it's fifty-three percent, which is currently versus sixty-two, it's somewhere in between there. It's not, well, real, it's only fifty-two or fifty-three percent by fifty-eight, that's it. So we, you want us to go back and redesign and see to bring the density down from eight forty-four, but somewhere above five fifty-eight and we have to come back to you.
And, and we are happy, we would be happy to, I think the small group members will be happy to discuss this further offline. And that means that you're not going to get the input of all seven of the planning board members. Um, but, and that's, also, I don't want you to redesign it. I want you to take, take a look at it. With, before redesigning, take a look at it and say, are there areas that we could make less dense? I mean, it was Anne Dexter who early on said, is there a way to make this more clustered with more open spaces? Maybe the way to do that is to provide more open spaces where some housing lots are now. Maybe you want to get rid of one of the multifamily. I don't know. Um, that's really for your team to go back and consider. As I, I want to reiterate again, these are the comments from the planning board only on basically a concept, you know, level. If the town board says, no, the density is fine, then you don't need to waste your time on this, in other words, as well, uh, redesigning because they are free to over, uh, not to really think that much about our comments. We have to supply them, but they are allowed to make their own decisions as well, the town board. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, no, no, it does. Thank you, Michael.
Michael, it also seemed to me that most of the comments on density uh, and reducing density were around the village. I know I said that, but I did hear it from others. And to also think about what kind of commercial people said they wanted to see. And back into your ratio, that's another way to look at the ratio is, well, if we need more restaurants here or more destination retail, what would that look like? And, and back that out. I, I'm just, you know, thinking out loud, but those are some of the things that we were talking about.
Your comments are spot-on, Stephanie, particularly because you've been on the other side. You were a developer and you retired now from that. But this is something that you're familiar with as well. And the sort of give and take of this process is what else can we look at based on the comments we're hearing?
Well, um, this is a lot of information and certainly we'd have to take you up on the offline meeting. Uh, that, those are, as you know, very helpful to us.
And they're very helpful to us as well. Could I ask just one, could I make one request? Can we wait till after November second? Everything is speeding up a lot here right now. That's all. Or maybe even closer to November second, put it that way. But yes, I think an offline meeting is warranted, uh, to further explore this. So Larry, why don't you and I kind of get our heads together and see if we can plan out some dates and figure out who should be invited? How's that?
Okay, that sounds great.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments for the, for this evening? I want to thank everyone.
After you have, after you have your offline meeting, schedule as soon as possible a follow-up with the planning board.
Absolutely.
So that all.
Well, well, again, there's.
What, what some may think in the meeting may not be the same as the others.
No decisions will be made in these meetings.
No, I know no decisions, but I wouldn't want people to be overly optimistic.
Excellent way to put that. So let me also, Larry, um, before we schedule a meeting, but we can go ahead and start talking about it, but give me some time to poll individual members as well to make sure I understand where they're coming from.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. And please keep us on, you know, in, in two weeks, because there are a bunch of comments here I can get going on.
No, 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 I'm, I'm keeping you on. It's just that, I want to keep this moving. We want to get to a yes. Let me, let me.
Correct.
Let me make sure I say that again. We want to get to a yes.
Yeah.
This is, there's too much money that's been spent, too much time. And frankly, this is too good a project to let go. I, I can promise you that a lot of the town folk will probably be saying, if we have a public hearing, they don't want to see as much density there either. But I can also tell you that I think a lot of our residents will be saying, well, we can't wait for that city winery. We can't wait for these restaurants because, you know, that's because of our lack of sewer in the uptown portion of our community, both Nine and Nine G. You know, restaurants are, they have a hard time. So we just don't have as, we don't have the same, uh, the name, number of options for, and Rhinebeck has so many more restaurants than we do and they're a quarter of our size, a quarter. Because they have a central sewer system. So the idea that you wouldn't have to go, I love going to Capola's, Joseph's, all our restaurants in town, Miso Sushi, uh, Cranberries, I can go on Antonella's. But I also, because I also like to sometimes have more variety than what just be offered here. We go to Poughkeepsie and Rhinebeck a lot for their dining options. We'll go to Millbrook sometimes. We even go as far as to Aminia for trout beck or something. The idea that I wouldn't have to travel that far to either with other residents here, particularly as we, a lot of us are aging. Driving is not as easy these days. The fact that we could just roll down the hill makes, is very, very appealing. I think you're going to have a lot of people in Hyde Park supporting a lot of what you're offering. I do.
Great. All right. So I'll give you a couple of days. I'll follow up. We're on. So I have Pete down. And Bonnie, you'll be following up with us. And, uh.
I will, Larry.
All right, great.
When you have the drone, when you have the drone footage, please let us know.
I will. As soon as we get it, um, I'll send it to you. And you'll circulate it?
I will circulate it out. Yes.
Perfect.
I have to ask, is there any rule reviewing the drone footage or guidance? Because I, I mean, are you going to be able to see depth on it? Or if you send it, please send any useful instructions.
Yeah. Is they're going to be stitching the photographs together. You'll have to download a free app in order to view the, the three-sixty image. I will send you instructions.
Thank you, because that was one of the nicer aspects today too. Even though we look goofy all staring up, every time it went up, we did look because that's, it was, no, it's an excellent way to understand your building height. You know, I, I, the hotel, I think, well, the height there is my biggest concern in terms of overall heights. That's just me. Other people have other concerns about their height, about building heights. Because of the elevation there, that was a real concern. And I could see that while there are trees there now that would occlude the view, that's where the hotel is going to go. And because of the grade change, you're going to see it. So I'm just interested in seeing what that view will look like. I'm, I will confess now that even though I'm concerned about the height, I have sort of been persuaded by, by Chair Dexter by saying, we're going to make that building look good. And plus, they want to make that building look good. And right now, the tallest thing you see in our town, if you're looking from the walkway, is our water tower. Bleh. You see something nicer and prettier? That's, that's going to be a nice thing. You know, at, at first I was worried, but then the distances that you're set back from, where you showed us some of the viewpoints from across the river, it's going to, it will, you're going to see it, but it's going to look like a Monopoly hotel, just more attractive. It's going to be small. So again, that was my concern at first, but because of distances, I feel a lot better of that. And then today, just thinking about the sheer breadth of the distance from Route Nine made me feel better too. So that, that's the advantage again of a sidewalk.
That's, that's the benefit of a sidewalk. And, uh, can you imagine having, uh, that hotel there, crown jewel, you know, in Hyde Park?
It would be lovely. And I'm sure that, that there would be many residents who'd like to dine in whatever restaurant they have. Um, go to the spa that's, I believe, that I know is planned for in there as well. Um, right now you have to go to, uh, Rhinebeck to get any kind of spa experience like that. And I think you're going to have more and more people, well, COVID, if it's not taught us nothing else, it's that change is afoot everywhere. I mean, the number of people I know that I've met recently who, there's a couple I just met that they've owned here six years. They were weekenders. They lived here a year and a half now and they now have given up their apartment in the city. They re-registered the vote. I mean, the whole thing, this is, this is changing our community as well. This will be one more, I think, positive change for it.
Okay, great.
We'll be back in touch. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I feel like we spent a long time today together, so it's been fun and nice.
It's, it's almost nine. I got here at seven. So, uh, a long day. All right, everybody. Have a great night. Take care.
Thank you, you too.
Great planning, Larry.
See you in two weeks.
Yep.
The next application is Holt Property Lot, Property Lot Line Alteration. This is under our code, a minor subdivision. Basically, um, the applicant is proposing changing a series of lot lines. Um, since the last meeting, we had a revised submission. I want to thank Mr. Martin for that because I could see the lines more clearly. Um, if anyone can call these, the plant update, there's one area that I think still needs work. And that's the area. So, um, Ernie, is Ernie here?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to excuse myself from the meeting, I believe, uh, yes, I am. And Brent, best wishes. Bye all.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thanks, Bonnie.
Good night, Bonnie.
Good night.
So if you can, oops. So right now, there's a note on the plan that says that all the solid lines are what are going to be, remain, that, that the new, that the new lots. But you still have shown in dotted lines, the lot where Mr. Holt's mother lives. And that, the thing is, is those can't be dotted. We're not turning that, that's that triangular piece, et cetera. That's not part of the application. So those, those dotted lines, they're on the, that's it, inside that big, I can't describe it, but uh, and of course I can't annotate. But the dotted lines there, that lot is going to remain, those should be solid. In other words, the lot, the, the lines that surround Mr. Holt's mother's parcel, those should be solid. But the dotted lines there, that lot is going to remain, those should be solid. In other words, the lot, the the lines that surround Mr. Holt's mother's parcel, those should be solid.
The house. The lines that go behind the house.
The line, the lines that go all around the house, those. And that the one below, not not there, not there, the one below, the little triangle piece right there. Yes, that's not going to be affected by, that somehow is lingering over from when we first saw this. Does that make sense? Peter, are you still here?
Yes, yep.
So those, those are shown as dotted. They should be shown as solid because the solid lines that have been indicated, see property line to be abandoned, the dots. Those property lines are not being abandoned in this application. Those, they have to go. That has to be solid again.
Yes, that's right.
My first, that's my first comment. Um basically, that's my only comment, because otherwise we have a resolution classifying the action, circulating, uh we're going to accept for sketch. We're going to set a public hearing tonight. So we're moving forward on this, but I want to make sure that everyone is aware that while we can move forward, we cannot approve that is shown. Floyd, does that make any sense to you?
Uh, you know, Ernie, I'm not sure Ernie's on right now.
He's not.
Okay, so uh first of all, I'm thankful that he does represent me and um and I know that he uh addressed each one of those questions that he talked to, except maybe Michael for that one. Um he he dealt with, he covered everything else, I think, that you requested.
That's, that's why we're, that's why we're ready to move forward on this. It's just that that one thing is sort of sticking there, remaining. It shouldn't be there. It shouldn't be there. She just showed the lot lines as permanent, because it's solid.
Sure. Um is that something that Cynthia or someone can communicate directly to Ernie? Because he had a personal commitment. He had to go.
I can communicate that to him. Don't worry.
Sure. And then he'll fix it for sure.
Yes, no problem.
Okay, yep. And I think uh and I think everything else has been taken care of accordingly.
Let me ask real quickly, Pete, Pete or Victoria or Tad, any comments from the three of you? I'll start Pete. Any comments?
No, no, that was it, Michael.
Victoria?
Um, so I think the line issue can be dealt with by adding another line to the the key. So that existing lines, you know, not to change is a is a different type of line. So we, I'm sure we can
Good point. Yeah, that's a good point.
Either way, either way.
They did submit the reputed well and septic locations that we asked for. Um so it all, it doesn't appear that moving these lot lines is going to create any kind of issue with that. And they they did um add density allocations. I defer to Tad. Whether, what, you know, whether you're okay with what that came out as. It was clear and understandable. Okay. So yeah, so those were the only issues that came up last time. Oh, and lastly, referring it to Department of Public Works. After the last meeting, the applicant provided us with resolutions from the county legislature.
Back then, the House of Representatives.
Sorry, from the county legislative body, the House of Representatives. Um wherein they voted to allow uh of, I think it was three.
Four.
It was four driveways off of the road. And um this location does appear to have one of those driveways. So we do want to send it over to them just to make sure nothing's changed. Um they haven't placed those driveways elsewhere on the road. That's it.
Actually, it was fun to read the minutes that that they sent, at least for me, because I recognize a lot of the names from the old days. I mean, long before I lived here. But uh people who are supervisors, and I didn't realize that it was maybe a year later I asked that they changed the charter so it became a county legislature as opposed to the representatives. So um and two of the representatives that were mentioned were actually former supervisors of Hyde Park. So fun to trip down memory lane.
And it shows the importance of good minutes, too, because you really got a flavor for the conversation that we're having.
Absolutely. Ms. Moss, any comments? Additional comments?
No, I just wanted to thank the applicant uh for updating the chart and including all of the lots. That really helped me. Thank you.
Me too. Floyd, be sure and tell Ernie that was very helpful for us.
I will, Joe.
Any comments from the board? Just raise your hand if you have one. I didn't think there would be, that's why. So um Floyd, we're going to start, as I said, the process. So we're going to circulate, and then we're also going to set a public hearing. And I believe this resolution will be introduced by Mr. Oliver.
Resolution classifying the actual Holt Lot Line Alteration, Resolution Number twenty twenty one dash eleven. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as an unlisted action under secret, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project. Two directs its secretary to send notice of its intent to serve as secret lead agency to all involved and interested parties. Three classifies subdivision plat as a minor subdivision pursuant to section ninety six dash twelve B two of the subdivision law. Four accepts a sketch plan in accordance with section ninety six dash twelve C of the subdivision law. Five directs its secretary to refer the project to the Dutchess County Department of Public Works for evaluation of a proposed access from St. Andrews Road.
Seconded, Diane Ten Apple.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously and make it a motion to set the public hearing for December first, twenty twenty one.
So moved, Diane Ten Apple.
Second, Chris Oliver.
Hey, discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Floyd will see you on December first. Um I will email Ernie about uh changing, I like Victoria's idea, actually, to say a third line, type of lines, the existing lot line to remain. That way, because it's the same line as used for the one to disappear. That's why I was concerned, because we can't really prove that it's not going to disappear. So anyway, in the meantime, have a happy Thanksgiving, Floyd, and we'll see you in December.
Thank you very much. And listen, I want to say, um I appreciate all the people that help uh me out on a daily basis, especially now with the Ernie Martin and the planning board. I just, I said it before, I'll say it again, I don't know how you spend that kind of time and do what you do on this regular basis. And go through agendas like this. I mean, they seem to be crushing, but somehow you do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
The next item is River Ridge. So this is a minor subdivision because we couldn't, as I, oh, yes.
Did we miss one?
Right aid signage, sorry.
Friday. Nancy probably just had a calf.
No, actually, I remember now. I I had wanted at first to change River Ridge out because there, I, but they're not here right now. So it's just, no, Jeffrey's still here. Jeff is still here, because that was a quick one. But let's go through Rite Aid. I'm sorry, Ms. Forrest is representing GNS Group. This is a request for a relaxation of letter heights. Um everyone's had a chance to see it. Nancy, do you want to go through the process?
Nancy is muted.
Muted.
She probably thought she had time. We're going to River Ridge.
Nancy, can you hear us? Uh oh. Nancy? Let me send the chat.
He's here. Nancy, I think you need to turn the volume on your computer up.
We can't hear you. You're muted again now, Nancy. You can't hear us either. Neil, do you think it would be helpful for her to pop off and then come back in? Is that possible?
Yes.
Um, let me try chatting that with her.
Can you hear us, Nancy?
Well, we have less people participating now. Can someone else chat with her? My chat function's not working.
I'm chatting with her right now. I don't know if she sees it, but look down. Okay, sign back in. Uh, do you want to do River Ridge while she works on this?
Yeah, let's do that real quickly. So River Ridge, they, there's going to be a relocation of a sewer easement. Because the easements are filed on the plat, as we all know, with the county clerk. We have to go through basically a subdivision process. Even this is not changing any lots or anything else. It's the only way to be properly recorded. Um so we have a resolution, typing it tonight as a type two action, accepting for sketch. And I believe we're going to set a public hearing because we don't have a way to uh not have a public hearing on subdivision. It's only for site plan attack and recommended waiver. Mr. Rothschild, welcome back. Do you want to add anything?
No, uh I I think Paul Schneider is is on also.
Yes.
Part of the um new management team there. And uh so I just want to introduce him. He's he's there, but he's not. So um
He can hear us.
Yeah. So that's all I, so I introduced Paul and yeah, I mean, it's a pretty simple uh relocation of a sewer and drain adjustment. The the lines are already in place, so.
Anybody have any questions on this application? Okay, then I believe this resolution will be introduced by Ann Wiser.
Resolution to classify as a type two action and accept a sketch plan, River Ridge, fully known as Maple Ridge, October twentieth, twenty twenty one. Resolution number fifty seven dash O two U. Whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type two action under secret. Two, accepts the sketch plan in accordance with section ninety six dash twelve C of subdivision law. Three, classifies the subdivision plat as a minor subdivision pursuant to section ninety six dash twelve B two of the subdivision law.
Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously and make it a motion to set the public hearing for November seventeenth.
We'll make that motion. Brent Pickett.
All second, Chris Oliver.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously as well. Ah, sorry to make you wait, gentlemen, all that time. Really sorry. You didn't have to be here.
At least it was worth it. I appreciate your time.
Of course, I I was thinking, I hope you're doing crossword puzzles or something during that whole long discussion, so.
Actually, Michael, Kathy's killing me because I keep going into the kitchen to eat. This is the worst thing to have these Zoom meetings. We're better off in Town Hall, I think, you know?
Well, the problem for us was is that we had to wear masks back during the Delta variant at Town Hall. And we discovered from talking to residents, they couldn't understand us at all. It was, in other words, when we spoke out loud, they could still hear us, but the mask muffled everything through the microphones. They seemed better, more prudent at least to go through this rather than having to face the ire of the residents. So um we'll be meeting by Zoom, I think, until probably it's no longer allowed, which I believe is mid-January, but we'll see what happens with um legislation then. For the time being, I'm 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 actually comfortable. I I missed meeting in person. And the first few times we met in person, I loved it. But when we had to wear masks, I was like, bleh, hating it. So I I think we're okay on this. At least my colleagues have adapted really well. I'll put it to you that way. So anyway, we'll see you back on the seventeenth, and I don't anticipate any problems with this. You don't want to you may want, you may hear occasionally from residents, you know, that when you have a public hearing, they usually speak about something landscaping issues, maintenance of the road, something. So if you want to be here, you can, but that's not what's at issue here. This is just the subdivision portion only. That's all.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. Nice to meet you, Mr. Schneider.
Yes, thank you very much. I I was um, I found your uh meeting thorough, detailed and well organized and uh so uh nice to meet you all and thank you for the work you do.
We we do, we we, it's somewhat organized this way because we also have our our councilman, deputy supervisor, Krepnik uh is directing this more or less for us, which helps a lot because some of the other meetings where I have to run them, plus run the meeting and do the Zoom, it's not as easily done, I can assure you. So the town's given us the resources for this. So thank you and welcome again.
Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda will be Rite Aid signage. If Ms. Forrest, can we hear her? Nancy?
She is still having trouble with her audio.
Okay, let's go on over to Dollar General. This is easy. We uh held the public hearing. This is exact, the exact same proposal, just like Jeffrey Groves, I hope. It was before. Um we know that there will be remaining conditions still there um that are going to be applied to this change. Um and we'd already made minor landscaping changes before, and these were okay in this resolution as well. Anybody have any questions? Or want to speak, Karen or Ken? You've been waiting so long, too. I'm trying to like get you through and out of here, so you can do whatever you want to do. So this resolution, anybody have any questions or comments? This resolution will be moved by Ms. Dexter.
Resolution to grant site plan approval, Dollar General at one East Dorsey Lane. Resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero four H. Whereas, 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 a bunch of whereas's. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants they plan approval to the project and authorizes the chair or has authorized design to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, approval by the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health of the methods of water supply and wastewater disposal. We have further resolved that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide the planning board with a PDF of the fully signed site plan set.
Seconded, Diane Ten Apple.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Ken and Karen, you're out of here. Sorry you had to wait so long. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sorry we had this hiccup. Now, honestly, you do have more time to deal with Department of uh Behavioral and Community Health, which I think kind of makes some sense. And I must tell you, it's exciting to drive by there and see the construction, rather than the implosion, you know, the track, drilling, everything now like you're supposed to do. So if we can be of any help, please let us know.
We're excited. We have a well, so we're on our way.
You got it. Hey!
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Happy Thanksgiving. Bye bye.
It looks as though Ms. Forrest is still not on.
I am on the phone.
Yay!
All right.
I can, I have been on all night long and everything was going fine. And then all of a sudden, I I couldn't hear anything. I could see you talking. We can't figure it out. So I called on the phone and I can see you on the computer.
No, it's interesting. Sometimes when this happens, your lips are not synced, but your lips are perfectly synced with the phone and what we're seeing on camera.
Exactly.
Okay, so let me turn it over to you, Nancy.
Okay, um for the Rite Aid, this is very similar to what I came um in front of you a few months back with the uh Chestnut Market, with the change in the ordinance on the letter size. I came to the planning board asking them um because it is in their power to relax the standard of the letter height on wall signs, just the building only. And I have two wall signs and um I sent one over asking for um relaxing the logo dimension in any direction from ten inches to seventeen and the letter height.
Directory sign, this is the, this is the standalone signage, not the wall sign. That's it.
No, these are wall signs.
These are now, yes. What we were seeing was the two, the standalone sign earlier on screen.
Yeah, those are the monuments.
Those are the monument signs again.
It's still not the wall signs.
Keep going.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a lot of signs. Keep going. I think it's um
Now we're getting close.
There you go. There you go.
Go back up one. That's the front. And then there's one more, which would be on the side. So at the top, you can see what exists and the bottom is the new branding. So I know I would still need to go to the ZBA, but if I can get the planning board um to relax the ten inch height to seventeen, as we did with my other one, and this one's actually a little further from the road. Um then I would be happy. It's up to you.
I just, I just need to ask the board members, I mean, I'm going to just say straight out that I I forgot, I took pictures today of the Rite Aid that's on Hooker because Ann Dexter told me about it a long time ago when it was first built. It's a very attractive one. You're right, Ann. And the the corporate branding is already up, the new logo. But that size, well, that's a single story, but their logo is not proposed as four and a half, a little over four feet. That noted, that's for the ZBA to determine. I just need to hear from the planning board members. Are you guys interested in making and honoring the request so we can uh offer them the increase up to seventeen inches? We call on each board member separately. Ms. Wiser, are you in favor?
I think it's way too big.
Seventeen inches?
The 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 four.
Just the, I'm asking about the the increase that we could do. Just the, I'm asking about the increase that we could do. Are you in favor of granting the increase up to 17 inches? That's all.
Sure.
It would be the ZBA that would have to give them the additional height, and if they, if they require comment letter, we could then, if we have enough of this to say four feet's too big, then we could say that then. But this is just for the dimensional increase.
Okay.
And Mr. Pickett?
I'm okay with a dimensional increase.
Thank you. Ms. Wasser?
Same, yes.
Ms. Dexter?
Yes, I'm okay.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes, I'm okay.
And Ms. Denapoli?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, Nancy, that was easy. I will prepare a resolution for the next meeting. If you don't want to be here, you don't have to. It looks like we'll be voting affirmatively and unanimously to grant up to 17 inches.
Well, they also have already sent me that I'm on the ZBA meeting next week, and I thought that was kind of odd because I thought I'd have to come to you again. I don't.
If you're on, they may just be starting the process, but we-
I mean, eventually, the board will have to approve the signs, but they can't approve them until the zoning board decides whether or not to grant the variances.
Okay, I don't think that I will be going to them for the full size that they have on their drawings. I wanted to start by seeing if I could get the relaxation to the 17-inch. And then I will reason with them on bringing it into a little bit larger than what's allowed, but certainly not four feet.
When I saw four feet, that's like the size of the letters on Bed Bath &amp; Beyond in the town of Poughkeepsie, which they shouldn't allow that, but they, in my opinion, they do. That's, that's really big. I mean, four feet, it's not that far back from the roadside. Plus, I mean, that's my drugstore that I use. I, I think most people know it's the drugstore, even if it's changing the corporate branding from the logos perspective. But, you know, we want to work with you. This is, this is a taller building.
Not a legal issue, but that, the green doesn't look legible on that building color at all.
That's their corporate colors as well. As I said, I drove by the one on Hooker to see what size they had, and theirs is, the logo is much smaller there. Again, it's a single story.
I agree. It gets really washed out.
Yeah.
Well, the picture does look a little bit more washed out. I've seen many of them. We've done so many of them. It's not as strong of a contrast as, as the blue. But, you know, I don't make their choices on that. The one on Hooker Avenue is very close to the road. Again, we do a lot of these national chains. We do the permitting and the installing. We don't design them and don't fabricate them. So I'm happy with the 17 inches. So now I can go back to them and reason with them and do another set of drawings at another height. Then the four feet, now that I know I have the 17.
Okay. Okay, we'll get that on the resol, we'll get that on the agenda for our November 1st. I'm not speaking well.
I should go to the ZBA. Okay.
Is this, is it a public hearing they've already set, or is this just for discussion workshop?
Um, I think it's, it's just next Wednesday, a week from tonight, I'm on the agenda.
That's probably just workshops, so you can, you can certainly discuss it with them, tell them what you heard from the planning board, that we'll be going to 17, and that you can talk to them and say that you also heard the planning board would recommend against the four feet, and so you're going to talk to your client, whatever you want to do there, but you want to, you might want to give them that assurance as well. Okay, dope?
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Good to see you. We'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Okay, bye bye.
Okay, and I said, if Tad doesn't have time to do that resolution, I will do it myself. Don't worry, because Tad, you're pretty, you're very busy, let's put it that way. The next item on the agenda is the Dutchess County SPCA addition. The applicants are still dealing, I believe, with Department of Health, and more importantly, they weren't aware that under New York State Building Code, a license, an engineer must stamp certain plans now that go before the building department. They did not have those stamped by an engineer, it was just by an architect, because there's been a change of code apparently, if I followed this correctly. And so they've had to find an engineer to now review certain plans and put his stamp on it. In case we all have forgotten, engineers are busy these days. Ask Pete. They're all looking for new ones, and everybody's super busy and behind, so we wanted to give them an extension of the time to satisfy the conditions of approval, so it can be solved. Anybody have any questions on this one? Okay, Mr. Pickett, you get to be the one to introduce this resolution.
Yep, last one. Resolution granting two 90-day extensions of the time to satisfy conditions of approval, Dutchess County SPCA addition, resolution 2021-02B. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant two 90-day extensions of time to satisfy the conditions of site plan approval, to and including April 14th, 2022.
Second it, Diane Denapoli.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And finally, I will introduce resolution 21-D, appreciation for board member Brent Pickett. October 20th, 2021. Whereas Brent Pickett has served six years as a member of the planning board of the town of Hyde Park, and whereas during his tenure on the board, Mr. Pickett served with distinction as a valued member of the planning board, and whereas Mr. Pickett was always well informed about and involved in board deliberations and consistently provided sage counsel. And whereas Mr. Pickett was integrally involved in reviews conducted by the planning board and made himself available to numerous non-core meetings with applicants. And whereas the planning board of the town of Hyde Park wishes to express its appreciation to Mr. Pickett for his unwavering and devoted service to residents, business, and proprietors of Hyde Park. Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby extends its appreciation to Brent Pickett for his distinguished service to the town, its commitment to improving the operations of its planning board.
I will second that. Ann Dexter.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye! Mr. Pickett is abstaining. Yeah, good, you didn't abstain. Say yes to it. So congratulations.
I want to thank you. I want to thank you very much. It's been a a nice and good learning experience. Deb and I like Hyde Park and plan on staying as for all foreseeable future. We're in a great neighborhood. We have great neighbors. Let me say, in our area, we've got houses that are anywhere from the 1840s to the 1860s. And so we all share our issues and ideas and vendors who's going to do some of our work for us. So I wish you guys all the best, and I think, I think I'll part with, there's a band, I think it's from the Police, that they've got a song with lyrics in it that go, every move you make, every smile you fake.
Every breath you take.
Every, yeah, every claim you stake, I'll be watching you.
Excellent, Brent, thank you.
Thank you, Brent. And remember, if you ever want to come and comment or do anything else, you live, what, a two-minute walk from town hall? So it's, when we're back in session, come back over, or feel free to opine anytime. Your opinions really are valued, et cetera. So it's been a pleasure working with you these six years. And again, as a reminder to anybody who's still watching, one of our alternates, Rob Waters, has this time agreed to come on as a full board member, so Mr. Waters has been an alternate for at least four, I think, or five years to the planning board. It's been a while. Yeah, and he accompanied us on our sidewalk today as well, just so we can get kind of up to speed on Bellofield and other projects. So we'll be meeting with him. In the meantime, it'll be odd not to see you, your face down to my left or here on the screen. So good luck. Good luck here, Jarvis. We'll see you around, I know. I'm not worried about that.
We'll see you.
And I apologize because there was a very nice resolution made, and I, something is wrong with my computer. And so it had a very nice border, and I finally, I finally was able to.
It's so pretty!
Well, we're going to present this frame to Brent, just like we did for Robert Groninger and a Chan Murphy. So he'll have something to toss in the closet or hang in a while, take its pick.
And I have a nice big box of stuff for Rob, so.
That's true, that's true. I just have to sign that, I have to sign the resolution itself. And that was Cynthia, Cynthia is the one who originally, just everybody knows, got the border and had it. I remember I was trying to fiddle with it, and the logo for Hyde Park kept moving around and disappearing, and Cynthia figured out how to master it there. So that was Cynthia's assistance as well. Anyway, if there's no other business, and I think there is, make it a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion, Chris Oliver.
Second, Ann Dexter.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, finally, I'm going to go celebrate. I'm going to go celebrate now.
What a birthday you got, eight hours of planning board.
It's a pleasure to serve with all of you guys. Well, seriously, I can't think of a better way to spend my birthday than with people I love and appreciate and admire. So, good night. Thank you, Neil.
Happy birthday. Thank you, Neil.
Happy birthday.